Hey Jim, can you hear me now?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, we'll commence with the meeting this July 1st. And we'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Noasad.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Public comment will be taken during the beginning and the end of the board meeting. Additional public comment periods may be allowed or individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public provide public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. Public comment is limited to three minutes, however, on some of the items, we may allow it for five because they are complicated. On matters over which the board has jurisdiction, supervision, or control, it is requested that the public comments be respectful of differing viewpoints and that individuals do not engage in personal attacks or become disruptive and orderly, they maintain an orderly conducting of the meeting. In addition, opening public comments and public comment will be also taken on the following agenda items when they are discussed by the board of, by the board of the chair, at the chair's discretion. We change this a little bit. Public comment will be taken on for possible action items under the administrative agenda, specifically items two through nine. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and the control of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there any public comment?
Good afternoon, Dave Brady for the record. In review of today's agenda, I find it, the format somewhat disconcerting and rather troubling in that public comment is provided or allowed at the very beginning of the meeting and subsequently at the very end of the meeting, but not on agenda items that are action items before the commission. I think that past practice has always been that the public is allowed the opportunity to weigh in on action items that are important to this community. I think that this approach creates an unfair disadvantage to the public as well as you as commissioners because you're not provided adequate input that is timely and appropriate to the issues at hand. Having the ability to speak before agenda items are even brought forward is somewhat premature and could not even, may not even be germane to the items that are being discussed. Likewise, having conversation or public comment at the very end of the meeting is an effort in futility. Discussions have been made and decisions have been rendered. So to that end, in my opinion, that's no way to run a railroad. I think that finding yourself back in the past practice of allowing for public comment is certainly more appropriate going forward. In particular, I request the chair, who has the discretion to add public comment in any agenda item, that he include public comment on item number two and item number nine. These are two very sensitive, critical issues for this community in that we're talking about the growth management ordinance as well as evaluation of the county manager. I certainly respect your decision, but I would certainly appreciate the opportunity to speak when those items come up. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brady, apparently you weren't listening. We just opened up public comment for those items. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record. Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager. You may have seen the press release, but if not, I wanted to draw to your attention and that of the public and businesses, that the county has a broadband survey out and we're asking the public residents and visitors to take it. And you can do that by going to the county's website at douglasnv, I should know our website, huh? DouglasCountyNV.gov. And scroll down on the right side where there's the blue links and click on the broadband survey. I will tell you that, oh, and then part of the reason that we're doing this is we're working with the Governor's Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology, and we're trying to gather information on current internet demand regarding providers used, level of satisfaction, interest in upgrading speeds, and the results will help us with planning strategies for better connectivity in Douglas County. So far, we just started these surveys about mid last week, and we just launched the visitor survey a couple days ago. We have 634 residential surveys already, which I think is really good, 37 business surveys, and 189 surveys. I am working in a few ways to do extra outreach. Scott Morgan with Community Services is helping with the congregate meals at Indian Hills and in South County, and so we'll have paper surveys there for those who are attending those meals. And I'm also working with the resident in South County to help get some extra distribution down there because South County typically deals with more challenging internet speeds than the rest of the county. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that information to your attention and ask everybody, please take the survey and please refer a friend or a business to do the same. Thanks so much for your time today.
Thank you. For the record, Jeannie Shizuru. Today is July 1st, 2021, and I want to call to the Commissioners' attention that while they are still recovering the bodies in the Florida condo collapse, that it's a good time for our county to consider if we have any buildings that need a look at. And particularly, I'm talking about the Tahoe Beach condos because, as some of you may be aware, when they were building the parking structure on the ground floor of those luxury condos, there was a lot of standing water. There was the comment that the draining wasn't going very well. Now, maybe that got corrected. Maybe, you know, the water level has gotten lower in the lake, but it's incumbent on our county at this moment to take a pause and, I think, re-inspect those luxury condos, especially the structural integrity of those condos, and consider if the water level were to go higher like it had been, that we have an inspection and written documentation that we use this moment in history to not only look at that building carefully, but any other building at the lake or anywhere in the county that we think that considering structural integrity is something that Douglas County should be cognizant of today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jen Naldor, for the record. I am your new appointed Program Director of the Main Street Gardnerville Program. This is a really huge honor for me, and I very much so look forward to working with you and the rest of the community in a community-wide effort to make sure that our downtown district is thriving with its economic vitality. So if you, now you have a face to the program, and if you guys ever need anything, then please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Jim Slade. I'm the chairman of the Sustainable Growth Committee, who brought forward the Sustainable Growth Initiative in 2002. Our petition had over 5,000 signatures and was approved by the voters. The Nevada Supreme Court sided with SGI both times it was brought before them. Since none of the current members of the board or community development were involved back then, I'd like to provide some history. The growth management element of our then-existing master plan in its introduction stated that it, quote, "seeks to ensure that new development in the county will be compatible with the county's limited groundwater resources and will not consume these in such a way that the county is faced with a water crisis in the future." It also called for a building permit allocation system, quote, "In addition to directing growth to the places where it is most appropriate and most consistent with the land use element, the county should take control of the rate at which growth occurs. Uncontrolled growth makes it difficult for the county to keep up with the expanded needs for roads, water, sewer, and other facilities. Unpredictable growth also makes it difficult for the county to plan for the best use of its limited groundwater resource. In order to protect the county's financial and natural resources, the county should adopt a building permit allocation system covering residential uses. The allocation system will allow for predictable growth rates. This provides for an orderly basis to plan and fund infrastructure and protect the groundwater resource." It also suggested, quote, "flexibility to allow a banking of a limited number of permits from one year to the next." The master plan goal was, quote, "to accommodate new development at a pace which can be adequately served by available community facilities and services." Yet from 1990 and earlier to 2007, Douglas County grew at more than 4% a year, well above the range of growth rates recommended by the master plan. Developments were being approved with little consideration of the master plan guidelines. In addition to addressing the overall growth rate, SGI was designed to mitigate the boom-bust cycle that has plagued Nevada, including Douglas County, and which is always unhealthy for economies, with the bust cycle leading to high levels of unemployment, foreclosures, and economic pain for many, just as in the Great Recession that started in 2007. SGI sought to make growth here steadier, more sustainable, to help prevent that boom-bust cycle. In 2006 and '07, community development, some county commissioners, including Mr. Brady, developers in the Sustainable Growth Committee, including myself, met every Friday morning for the better part of a year to craft the growth management ordinance. That ordinance is an outgrowth of the Sustainable Growth Initiative, and it might not have been adopted without SGI, which it replaced. Because of my long, detailed engagement with the process of creating the growth management ordinance and the building permit allocation system, I feel that I not only understand the letter of the ordinance as well as anyone, but the intent as well. Thank you.
Jerry Turner. I'm here of concern for our kids, grandkids, and great-grandkids' futures. Our country and countries around the world are under attack since 1954. World War III using silent weapons. Read the book, Behold a Pell Horse, written by William Cooper, who was murdered for the book's contents. Watch the videos, YouTube, 5G Apocalypse Dash, the Extension Event, in all caps, and Barry Trower, 5G Wi-Fi Smart Meters Armageddon interview. The dangers and effects of 5G and Wi-Fi are exposed. Scientists, professors, doctors, engineers, and private organizations, et cetera, have come forward in governments and in subcommittees, interviews, and testifying, exposing the dangers. I contend that COVID-19 fake pandemic was partially created to take the focus off the exposure dangers of 5G military-grade created weapons and equipment dangers being installed. 5G frequencies are stated to be killers by experts, destroying cell DNA, microbes, immune system, and brain functioning, creating weakness and sicknesses. Expert Barry Trower on 5G microwave frequencies comments on the chain created by microwaves. All living cells, DNA of creation, are damaged by 5G. Humans, trees, insects, animals, microbes, et cetera. Microwaves continually harm and kill cell forms like trees. From trees' death, carbon dioxide is not taken from the air, which trees provide air and sucrose from carbon dioxide. Tree leaves decompose, washed to the sea, that provide 70% of food chains for fish. Fish will die. Microbe cochalifers that produce dimethyl sulfide, that is the catalyst for clouds, will die and will create droughts and floods in drier areas, and the microbes destroying anthropods responsible for 80% of pollination, ending food supplies, on and on. There's a test in Australia where transmitters are placed on a mountain emitting microwaves 5G called the Site of Special Scientific Interest, Australia, YouTube. Since the test, all life that could leave has left. Everything stayed, has died, and all microorganisms in the soil have died. Everything is dead. Trees, animals, insects, anthropods, microbes, soil, all dead. And we are now placing 5G military-grade towers, smart meakers, smartphones, TVs, LED lights on lamps, and in our houses, dispersing a 5G blanket. Low satellites are being placed in orbit to have 5G covering the whole planet, which... To be continued is the second public comment.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked the chair for a couple of minutes today during public comment. Number one, I did want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for opening public comment to all actionable items, and I hope we continue that practice in the future, and I salute you for that decision. Secondly, we had an incident in South County last evening. We had a torrential rainstorm come through our area and threw an alluvial fan coming out of the foothills. It shut down one complete road, Penrod Lane, and also caused other issues down below the lodge. And last evening, around 8:00 in the evening, I called John Herb, our Director of Roads and Public Works, I guess, and he had a crew out there this morning mitigating that issue and taking care of both of those incidences that could have possibly caused severe issues with getting emergency vehicles into that area. So I wanted to take the opportunity today at this meeting to thank John Herb and our Roads Division for taking care of those in such a rapid manner and protecting the safety of our citizens down in South County. So, thank you, and thank you, John Herb and your department.
Thank you. Mr. Cates? Did you want to say something? Open comment? This weekend is significant, it's probably the most significant holiday that we all enjoy, the Fourth of July, which recognizes that we gained our independence some 245 years ago. In keeping with that, there's a book. It's called Almost a Miracle. And I would highly recommend this in your private library or for the young adults in your family or anybody else as a gift item. It's an amazing read, and it's something that is, got a lot of diagrams in it and what these people went through in their battle against the strongest military in the world at the time. So, we are being attacked at our border because the current administration is doing nothing. They currently want to defund the Border Patrol. Now, I'm going to tell you something, this is a police story. When I was in the LAPD working Hollywood Vice, we would get information from the gang guys, the narcotics guys, and so forth. What we got from narcotics, and this is to show you how sinister and evil these cartels and gangsters are. They're smart, they're cunning, they're smarter than, and they're street smart. They're not like you and me. They, they think differently. They were going around and they wanted to get kids hooked on meth. Well, meth is typically a powder, and they would take the meth powder and they had to encapsulate it in a pill. And what they did is they took the cocaine paste, which dry, and make a pill. Then they would take that pill and coat it with cherry or lemon flavors and give it to the kids. And one of those pills was enough to hook kids, young kids, 14, 15 years old. So this is what we're up against. Anyway, have a good Fourth, and we'll get through this together, but these are some of the things we have to recognize that are going on. Thank you. Is there any further public comment from the audience? Seeing none, commence with the agenda. Approval of the agenda. For possible action, approval of the proposed agenda, the Board of County Commissioners reserves the right to take items in order, to take items in different order and accomplish the business of the, in the most efficient manner. To combine two or to move an agenda item in consideration and to remove items that are from the agenda or to delete discussions relating to items on the agenda. Do we have approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I second.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, I move for the approval of the agenda.
You have a second? We have an approval of the agenda by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Approval of the previous minutes. For possible action, discussion to approve the draft minutes of the May 20, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Do I hear a motion?
Were there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of May 20th, 2021, as presented.
I'll second the motion. By voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, 5-0. We will now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Douglas County Liquor Board. For possible action, discussion to approve the legal name change for Columbia Properties LLC DBA Mont Blanc to Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bailey's Lake Tahoe. The corporate structure and the taxpayer identification number will remain the same, and the only change will be the legal name the company currently holds. Holds a packaged retail liquor license, 17 unrestricted liquor licenses, one unrestricted caterer liquor license, eight entertainment endorsements, and non-endorsement gaming licenses. Timothy Trenton and Greg Boyer will represent Bailey's Lake Tahoe and have both signed a waiver of notice on the hearing. Bailey's, Bailey's Lake Tahoe is located at 55 U.S. Highway 50, State Line, Nevada. Captain Mitch Garian, are you available?
Chairman, it's Under Sheriff Ron Elgus for the record. Mitch Garian is unavailable today, so I'll handle these. These are just names, this is just a name change. There's no other, for us, no, we have nothing else other than this, a name change.
Thank you, Under Sheriff. Do I hear a motion?
I had a question real quick. Is, is there a name change?
Is, is there a name change of the hotel itself, or just, is it, is it going to be re-labeled, or is it going to remain Mont Blue?
Under Sheriff Ron Elgus for record again. They haven't given us a, a name other than it's under Bally's, I believe is the, is the new company owner, correct, Sheriff? But they haven't actually said a new name for the hotel, unless you, Sheriff, you heard one, I haven't.
I believe that the name of the hotel will change. I'm not sure what it is. We have a gentleman from Bally's here today that may speak to that.
For the record, my name is Tim Trenton. I'm the Vice President General Manager of Mont Blue. And the question was whether the name will change to Bally's Lake Tahoe, the name will change to Bally's Lake Tahoe.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I would like to move that we approve the legal name change for Columbia Properties LLC doing business as Mont Blue to Premier, Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC doing business as Bally's Lake Tahoe. And I would, for one, love to welcome Bally's. And Tim, welcome back.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. The motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Item B or two, for possible action, discussion to approve the legal name, legal name change to Columbia Properties LLC DBA Mont Blue Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC DBA Bally's Lake Tahoe. The corporate structure and taxpayer ID number will remain the same. The only change will be the legal name. The company holds a, an audit, or excuse me, adult characterized business license so they can serve adult beverages. Timothy Trenton and Greg Warrior will represent Bally's Lake Tahoe, and they have signed a waiver of notice, of hearing, and Bally's Lake Tahoe is located at 55 U.S. Highway 50, State Line, Nevada. Captain Mitch Garion, or Under Sheriff Elgus.
Thank you, Sheriff. Under Sheriff Ron Elgus for record. Yeah, again, just a name change. We're not contesting anything.
You want to take a motion, Commissioner Rice?
Yes, Commissioner Noasad moves that to approve the legal name change for Columbia Properties LLC doing business as Mont Blue to Premier Entertainment Tahoe LLC doing business as Bally's Lake Tahoe.
I will second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Noasad, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have to, I need to remind, the record shows six to zero. Mr. Mr. Coverley serves on this board, and he is voting in the affirmative as well. I could hear him out of the right side of my ears.
I apologize, Sheriff. Okay, it's six in favor and no opposed. Okay, we'll move, we'll adjourn as the County Liquor Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. The consent calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are items that can be adopted with one motion unless there is an item that is pulled and a commissioner or a member of the public. Members of the public who wish to have an item, a consent item placed on the administrative agenda shall make the request during the public comment section at the beginning of the meeting and specifically state why they are making the request. When items are pulled for discussion, they will automatically be placed at the beginning of the administrative agenda and may be continued until another meeting. Item H has been pulled and moved to the first item on the administrative agenda. Is there any other questions? Item H is in regard to, as a possible action, discussion to approve the $50,000 one-year contract with the Northern Nevada Development Authority for marketing, attractions, and retention, and other economic development services for the fiscal year 2021, '22, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract related to this. Lisa Granahan, do you have anything you want to comment on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
At this time, I would move for the approval of the consent calendar minus item H, which will be moved to the first item of the administrative calendar.
I'll second it. We have a motion to move item H to the administrative calendar by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Ms. Did they approve the consent?
Yeah, that's what he just mentioned, right? Or no, he just approved the agenda. I think you, I think you still need to approve the consent, the items on consent.
I was just to approve the item H.
The consent calendar was approved, as I understand it, on a 5-0 vote with the movement of item H to the admin calendar.
Correct.
As I understand it.
Thank you, sorry, we got a little confused.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, is everybody clear on the item H and the NNDAs, the Northern Nevada Development Authority? And what, what happened in the budgeting process is that we went from allocating $25,000 a year to $50,000 a year. And the rationale behind this was they already have been effectively and produced, getting production companies up here from the movie industry, and we want to have more of an effort put forward. So, Ms. Granahan, and hopefully we'll have Rob Hooper from the NNDAs on, or Lynn O'Mara. So, Ms. Granahan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager. The chairman recapped the item quite nicely, thank you. There is also a letter attached to the agenda package from Rob Hooper, the CEO and President of NNDAs, and it talks about the request and what they can do. NNDAs was reduced significantly in funding by the state governor's office for economic development, so that is part of their request as well. I know that one of our residents, Ellie Waller, had a number of questions that were posed in public comment, and I'm not sure if Rob Hooper is on Zoom, but Lynn O'Mara, who just had a title changed, so Lynn's going to have to provide you with her title, she is on Zoom and ready to answer any questions that, and those that were addressed in public comment, if that's satisfactory, Mr. Chairman.
Natalie, is Lynn O'Mara, oh, there she is, okay. Hi, Lynn.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, Mr. Chair. Or good afternoon, actually. Would you like me to address the questions that I can? I can answer most of them.
Lynn, you have the floor, go ahead.
For the record, Lynn O'Mara, Vice President, Administration and Programs, Northern Nevada Development Authority. I would like to respond to the questions posed by Ms. Waller. I can address almost all of the questions. Regarding question number one, and regarding who serves from Douglas County on the Western Nevada College Institutional Advisory Council, of the members on that council, one of them is Mr. Alan Jerkonis, who is President of American AVK in Minden. He is a voting member of the Institutional Advisory Council and represents the manufacturing sector, not specifically Douglas County, but the manufacturing sector of southern of the Sierra region in general. In response to question two about the NNDAs pipeline and what do we receive from those in the pipeline, as all of the regional development authorities who are designated by the Governor's Office of Economic Development, we receive no compensation from our pipeline. We do receive funding from the state to assist in our efforts to work with companies, both who are interested in relocating or expanding in the Sierra region, as well as assisting our, our existing companies with expansion and retention, and we do not receive any compensation from those in that pipeline when we are helping them. They are clients, and we do not take any compensation from them. Regarding question three, regarding the, the two companies and where they came from, the winds in Douglas County, both of those companies chose to locate in the Carson Valley area, so that is where the jobs were created and where the equipment investments were made. With respect to the service area for, I forgot to state that under question one, the service area that is designated to NNDAs by the Governor's Office of Economic Development is Carson City, Douglas County, Lion County, Mineral County, and Story County. That is our designated service area, and that is where we represent GOED directly for all economic development activities in the state and work in collaboration with them, as well as the, our fellow regional development authorities pursuant to NRS 231. With respect to the EPA Brownsfield Grant, question number five, I cannot answer question number four, that is for the county. The EPA Brown, the EPA Brownsfield Program is, is to review real properties whose expansion, redevelopment, or reuse may be complicated by the presence or perceived presence of hazardous substances, pollutants, or contaminants. Often, this may occur in underused buildings or form of commercial facilities such as gas stations, dry cleaners, heavy manufacturing. And as part of the due diligence on the part of the buyer, they usually would need to do an environmental assessment, and the Brownfield Grants can assist with that process. Right now, for, during, under the current collaborative, collaboration agreement, it's a collaborative grant that's been given to NNDAs, Douglas County, and Carson City, there have been 14 properties assessed by, under the grant, and the property owners, there's no cost to them for this to happen. And then, and for all of those who, that went through phase, the phase one, only one was found to have some issues. So a phase two assessment was completed, and based on that, the issues were identified to the property owner. There was assistance provided for an reuse plan and a cleanup plan, and then also the owner was assisted with obtaining financing to help with the implementation of that plan. The coalition, usually what will happen is, is we will work directly with the property owner, although sometimes the county may decide that they request a property to be assessed, to be assessed under the program, and then we also will work with the property owner in doing that as well. And then finally, for question six regarding the certified sites program, right now, there are two certified sites in Douglas County. The home site is 40 acres and located at Hayborn Road in Johnson Lane, and the Buckeye Science Park is 152 acres, and that is on Buckeye Road. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Mr. Case, go ahead.
If I may, I'd like to address the two, two questions that are remaining. The first question was about the build grant and whether we received a build grant award. So in the last round of build grants, we did not receive a reward, we did increase significantly in our ranking. I was optimistic for this next round of build grants. However, the Biden administration changed the rules. It's no longer a build grant, they call it a raise grant, and they've changed the criteria. In particular, the money is targeted at low-income communities and no longer seems suitable for our project. So now we're looking at other alternatives. We've been reaching out to the congressional delegation. There is an infrastructure bill going through Congress, there may be other opportunities, but there are no more build grants. Now it's raise, and this project doesn't fit the criteria. The other question that remained answered are what other similar organizations the county funds. The only one that I would point out that is somewhat similar is Western Nevada Development District. I, I see it as very complementary to NNDAs programs. NNDAs is focused very much on recruiting businesses, whereas Western Nevada Development District is very focused on working with the local jurisdictions on grant writing, infrastructure projects, that sort of thing. And we pay them approximately $7,000 a year, and I think both programs serve the county very well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I move that we approve a $50,000 one-year contract with Northern Nevada Development Agency for Marketing, Attraction, Retention, and Other Economic Development Services for fiscal year 2021, '22, and authorize the county manager to sign the contract and related
Mr. Chair, I will second that motion, indicate that we had approved this increase in the previous budget that we approved, so these are funds that are already budgeted, so I concur with that.
So that's a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Thank you all very much. Airport, for presentation only, presentation on the status of the Minden Tahoe Airport.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Johnson, I'm the airport manager of the Minden Tahoe Airport, and I really appreciate the opportunity to come and give you an update on the airport. It's going to be basically about a 37,000-foot update on a, more of a strategic view of what's going on, and with a couple of details on some things that we're facing, so. I'm, I know you guys have a busy schedule today, so I'll go ahead and get right into So as everyone knows, we had a little event go on last year, a little pandemic, and it hit us in an interesting way out there. At first, we really thought that we were going to be facing a 25 to 40% disc, decrease in airport revenue, and it actually didn't. It, airport traffic for the first month really slowed down, but then it went It, airport traffic for the first month really slowed down, but then it went quick, quickly went back to normal. And we actually had a lot of traffic flying last year. We laughed about it a few times because we, we use what's called Flight Radar 24, and we can see some of the aircraft that are flying around our area based on their ADS-B output. And we would look at the Minden Tahoe Airport compared to the Reno Tahoe Airport, and Reno, as you know, the commercial airlines weren't flying, so Reno had no traffic, and we'd look at us, and we had 20-something aircraft in the air. So we were joking that we were busier than Reno last year, but again, that's because of the commercial airlines, but it was, it was, we were pretty busy last year. And the reason for that is because flight training continued, pilots continued flying. So as I've said quite a few times, what better way to social distance yourself than to put 5,000 feet between you and the rest of the world? So general aviation actually did pretty well. We did have a couple of our airport businesses slow down out there, but very few of them actually struggled with it, because as I said, general aviation continued on pretty well. And then our revenue for the airport was above expectations last year, and I'll kind of touch on, on that here in the next couple of slides. So during the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the CARES Act, it was signed into law on March 27th of 2020, sorry, I missed a zero on there. The act affected the airport in two ways, and it was pretty beneficial to us. And I'm going to go into the, into the airport, into the capital improvement program through the FAA here in a minute, but the, under a normal, on a normal grant, we have a 6.25% local match. So as an example, if we have a $100,000 project, the FAA is going to pay $93,750 of that, and we're going to pay $6,250 of that. That sounds like a small number here, but when we get into our larger multimillion-dollar projects, it becomes a pretty substantial number for us. Under the CARES Act, though, the local match for, for airports was waived. So for us, where we did finish the Taxway Zulu Phase Two project last year, that was a savings of 100, of over $177,000. And then also, we replaced our AWAS, which is our Automated Weather Observation System, and we saved $40,000 in that project also. So our local matches were waived. It was very beneficial to us and helpful. And then also, we applied for and received a grant of $69,000 under the CARES Act. And this year, we have the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. You can say that five times real fast and rolls off the tongue, but under the CRSA, we've applied for and received a grant for $23,000. So as I was saying, we, during the pandemic, we, we did remain open. We, airports can't close down during the pandemic, and so we did remain open the entire time. We worked normal staff hours, but we took appropriate precautions to make sure that our staff was safe and that visitors to the airport were safe. The doors to our office, initially, we did lock up the doors to the office. We put some drop boxes on the outside and signs on the outside of the door instructing people that if they needed to drop off a payment, or if they needed to drop off paperwork, they could drop it in the drop box and, and let us know, and we could pick it up from those drop boxes. But then, once we did open up, we have existing barriers already built into the building that we, that we've been able to use to, to maintain that social distancing. For example, our office manager's desk has glass windows on all sides of it, so she's able to still communicate with customers, but not have direct contact with them. So now we're going to get into the really fun part. The capital improvement program. Under the FAA's capital improvement program, the airport is eligible for federal grants that we use for capital improvements and for maintenance of our capital. The, the program provides a grant to the airport at 93.75% of the project cost, and we have a local match of 6.25%, as I talked about in the previous slides. That right there limits a number of airports from being able to participate in the program, simply in the fact that they do not have the, the funding to have, provide that local match. So some of your smaller airports out there do not get the support from the county, or they do not get, they do not have the, they're not self-sustaining, so that they cannot provide that match, which means they get passed over for grants. The Minden Tahoe Airport is self-sustaining. As you know, there's the PALS item in the, in the county budget, the parks, airport, and libraries, and the airport does not take any money out of the, out of the general fund, out of the PALS. We are completely self-sustaining in everything that the airport does out there. That has been a big benefit to us, and the fact that every time a, a capital project comes up, we are able to do our local match on it. And not just that, but also when some of these other airports cannot provide that local match, often the FAA will come back to us and, and let us know that they're going to fund us with some additional money, and we can provide that local match for the, to increase our project. So it's been a good thing for us. Since 2012, we've applied for and received over $18 million in federal grants. With our, with our local match, we've been able to complete over $19 million in capital improvements and maintenance using this program. So you can see that it's been a very beneficial program to us. So I'm going to go into some of the capital improvements that we've done, that we've been doing and what we've got on the plan. And I do want to point out the map to the lower-left corner. You'll see there, it has highlighted what I'm talking about, but that map, it's, I want to give credit to my operations supervisor. We wanted a large-scale map that we can print and hang on our wall, and normally GIS provides that for us, but they didn't have any imagery that's more recent than the beginning of this year, when we finished Zulu. So my operations supervisor went out with a drone at 400 feet and shot 1,500 photos of the airport and compiled that map. So we have, as we like to joke, we now have CIA-level mapping on the airport. But yeah, I always get a kick when I look at that map and think of what he did to get that map for us. So in 2020, as I talked about here a few minutes ago, we did complete Phase Two of Taxway Zulu. Taxway Zulu, when it's complete, will run parallel to runway 16, which is our northern, our north, north-south running air runway, and it will provide access to the east side of the airport. The east side, as I'm going to talk about here soon, is, is vital to the airport. It's, that is the future of the airport. But so you can see on there, Taxway Zulu, and there's the nice, nice new taxway in the photo there. And so people who ask, why Taxway Zulu? And it's simply because it's on the opposite side of runway 16. So Taxway Alpha runs parallel to 16, so naturally, what's on the opposite side? Zulu, just made sense. And there's not many airports out there that have a Taxway Zulu, so. In 2021, this year, as you can see in the photos there, we've got some, some asphalt that's been degrading pretty bad, which is normal. Our, our climate can be pretty rough on asphalt. But normally, in these areas, the FAA would not cover these, these taxways because they, they say that those taxways serve a limited number of hangars. But now they have, we, we sat down with them and discussed that, that all aircraft have access through those taxiways, or through those taxi lanes, and so they did agree to do rehabilitation on those taxi lanes. So that's what we're doing this year. We're going through, adjacent to all of our, our county-owned hangars and rehabilitating those taxi lanes. Then coming up for the next three years, as you can see in the purple block up there, we will finish Taxway Zulu. We will connect it all the way to the northern end of runway 16. It will not have a run-up area, it will actually have two connector taxi lanes up there, taxways, so that aircraft can get around each other up there. In 2023, we're going to do a rehab on Taxway Alpha. And as we went through and planned this, that's when I realized how long I've been on the airport, because I remember when we went through and did the last total rehab on Taxway Alpha. So I sat down with them, and we were talking about needing to put that into the maintenance cycle, and I thought, boy, I've been here a long time. So I think that's a sign I'm getting old. Then in 2024, we're going to construct the east side ramp. That right there, as I said before, the east side is, is vital to the airport. We are out of space on the west side, and so constructing that east side ramp and putting those taxiways in place, as I've talked about with a few people, we can build hangars out there all day long right now. But if there's not a taxiway that gets the aircraft from the runway to the hangar, the hangars are going to sit empty. That's a pretty substantial cost, so we have worked it into the capital improvement program to get those costs covered. But those will be happening in 2024. So onto the future, this is, this is what I've kind of been talking about, with the importance of the east side. We are in very high demand right now, very high demand. The airport has historically been in high demand. We've, since 2012, we have over-doubled our, our base aircraft in growth. So I'm, I'm going to use our T-hanger situation as an example of, of the demand that we have right now. And I want to explain, a T-hanger is called a T-hanger because it's a T-shaped hangar. As you look at the diagram up there, that's one building, and the individual hangar bays are shaped like Ts, so that aircraft can back into them and, and park in there, but and it's, it gives you a more efficient use of the space, so that aircraft can nest inside of there. So that's why they're called T-hangers. I threw that in there because every time I talk about T-hangers, most people ask me, well, what, what is a T-hanger? So. So that graphic right there shows you, we have 80 T-hangers on the airport that the airport owns and manages. The county owns those, those T-hangers, and we rent them out. So that's our, that's our T-hanger count right there. For our T-hangers, we currently have a wait list for those T-hangers. To get onto that list, a person has to get, fills out an application and pays a $100 non-refundable deposit. That, that deposit does get applied to their security deposit or their first-month rent when they do move in, but that also prevents people from just throwing names onto the list and, and bogging down the list. It gives people an incentive to, to be serious about joining the list if they want to. For every entry into the list, there's a financial transaction recording the date that the person enters the list, so people cannot jump the line. It's, it's a list that's documented and, and moves forward. The only way someone jumps the line is that we do have a couple of people up at the top of the list that are already in hangars, but they're waiting for a different hangar, like one of the end hangars that has a little more space. So those few people at the beginning, at the top of the list, they get the option to move into a hangar. They typically turn it down because they're waiting for a specific hangar, in which case the next person moves up. So that's the only way that someone can skip on the line on there. When a person vacates the T-hanger, the next person on the list is given the opportunity to move into the newly vacant T-hanger. Unfortunately, that's not a high number. We're looking at very few, like less than five turnovers per year. Last year, I think we had three. And the reason that people are leaving our T-hangers isn't because they want to leave the airport. The typical, typically, and unfortunately, we lose our T-hanger tenants because the pilots are passing away, or they're aging out, or they have a medical issue that they cannot get their medical certification anymore, and they cannot fly anymore. So we haven't had anyone come in and leave the T-hangers because they want to leave the airport. So there's the graphic that shows our T-hangers, and how many aircraft are waiting to get into our T-hangers. So that's a pretty, pretty neat graphic showing the demand that we have out there, and how many people are waiting to get to the, to the airport. We do have tie-downs, which are tie-downs out on the ramp, and a lot of those aircraft are on tie-downs right now, waiting to get into those hangars. Right now, we currently have three pending land leases to build hangars. We have three land lease applications, and one of which is coming to the board next, in the next meeting, but, and then we've got two pending, they're, they're getting their, their survey work and applications finished up now. So, but those three locations there, they're looking at building some hangars there. And we've already started working with our, our consultants and our engineers to design the east side and get the east side designed in, in such a manner that, well, to preface that, on the west side, we have a, we have a problem with, with how the hangars are laid out on the west side, because the west side has been piecemealed together. What that has done is there's a number of businesses or, that are on the airport that are airlocked, meaning they don't, you cannot drive up and, and just drive straight to the airport, or to the business. You have to actually go on to the airport property through the gates to get to the business. We had a flight school that was like that, which was problematic for them, because new students couldn't just drive up to their office. The new students had to come check in at the airport admin office, and they had to come pick them up. So we have a number of businesses that are airlocked like that. The design on the east side is going to make it so that all of the hangars over there will have a landside access road to them, so that people will be able to drive up to the airport, to their hangars, and be able to access their hangars without driving on the airport. As a safety guy, that is very high on my priority list, because when, anytime you introduce ground vehicles onto an airport, you're increasing your safety risk there. And our job is to mitigate risk. So by, by doing that, we'll be able to provide landside access to all the hangars. Also, the designing is to keep the, keep the taxi line, taxi lanes and taxiways into similar types of aircraft. If we build a taxiway that has a safety zone of 145 feet, so that we can pull a Gulf Stream in there, and right next to that hangar, we have a little hangar for a Cessna 172, that's wasted space. So the design is, is parceling it out so that we have light taxiways that will service light hangars, and so that we won't have that wasted space in there, and we'll get more efficient use of the space on the east side. So that's the east side of the airport that I'm talking about. And as I said, it's, it is the future of airport development and responsible growth. We don't have any more space on the west side, but we have the demand, as I've shown you, and that is where it's going to be. That's our, our east side development. So our events, this year, we had the 2021 Soaring Nationals, and actually, we had two Soaring Nationals. We had one, one event, but it was for two different groups. So we, the airport was selected due to the hard work of the Sports Aviation Foundation and the Minden Soaring Club and High-CR Pilots, and all of the soaring group out there, they brought the two, both of the soaring competitions out here. So we had the open meter, or the open class and the 15-meter soaring competitions out here. Was a very successful event, very hot out there, but they did some good flying and had a good time. In early November, we're looking at doing a poker run. For those who don't know what a poker run is, it's just like with motorcycles. So we're working with other airports in the area and flying groups, so that people will come out to the airport and they'll fly their airplanes out to other airports, and they'll get a poker card or a poker chip, and fly and visit all of the airports, come back to ours, they'll hit the, the restaurant and see who won the prize, see who has the best hands. So we're working on, on that with other airports and some aviation groups to, to make that poker run happen. And then also, one of the favorites of the airport is the touring aircraft, the Collins Foundation, the, as you can see up there, the B-17, that's the, the Sentimental Journey from the Commemorative Air Force. All of those, we love to bring those aircraft out here. They're great for the public to be able to see them, because you can't usually see a B-17 or a B-25. All these World War II aircraft, they're becoming more and more rare every day, and so we love to bring, bring those out, and so that the community can see these aircraft, see this aviation history. And we are working with these groups again to get back into the established, into their touring schedules. So, and there's one other event that we have coming up, and that it would be the Aviation Roundup. So working last year with the, with the Blue Angels, they called back in, oh, right around June, July timeframe, and they, they said, Tank, can we move your airshow date to October 22nd, 23rd? And I said, yeah, I think we can do that for you guys. And they said, okay, well, we're going to put you on the schedule. So they, they want airports to keep that quiet until the official announcement in December, and then when they made the official announcement in December, they said October 1st and 2nd. I said, okay, we'll do that, too. So, you know, with the Blues and the, and the Thunderbirds, you try to accommodate them in every way you can. So they will be coming back, the Blue Angels, and they will be flying their new FA-18 Super FAS, FA-18 Super Hornets. So, um, it's going to be a very powerful show, good show. So that being said, are there any questions?
Any questions from the audience? Uh, any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner, what was that?
Um, being a Navy veteran, what, 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 October 1st and 2nd is that cement?
That is cement. That is correct. And that's on their, their, the, um, Blue Angels webpage too. So when you, when you see they put it in writing, that means it's pretty, pretty solid.
We had an opportunity to go out to the airport a couple of weeks ago and have a guided tour by Chris, and it was astonishing the amount of activity going on, and we had a chance to visit Skydance helicopters. They don't do tours, they do commercial work. They, um, do work for NV Energy, cleaning the power lines, and they had a helicopter there that they had just put together for fire suppression or something that was going to be shipped to Dubai. And it was very curious to me how Dubai and these guys got together. But, uh, so not only does it bring in a lot of aviation activity, it brings in a lot of commercial activity too for the county. So it was a, it was a good day, and thanks, Chris, it was a, a real good tour. And, you know, we were just talking about N-NDA in a previous agenda item, and Rob Hooper wanted to see more about what was going on out there, because he's got some ideas. So, uh, yeah, you've got a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And if I may, Chris Johnson, for the record, we do have some, some great businesses out there and, um, some hidden little gems that aren't, they're not openly publicized, but, for example, the Perlin Project. The, um, the Perlin Project, their first glider, the Perlin One, was a glider that went to, and I'm trying to remember numbers, so forgive me, uh, I think they went to 55,000 feet. It was a standard glider, so they were flying in pressure suits, and the problems that they ran into there was that the pressure suit expands, and they're in a small glider cockpit, and so their movement was, became difficult. They have now designed the Perlin Two. The Perlin Two is a pressurized glider, and it is designed to go up over 90,000 feet. So, um, for reference, uh, airliners fly at 37,000 to 40,000. So they are going to, they've already taken it out, and I believe they've gone it up to 76,000 feet now. But, um, the reason that they're based here in, in Minden is because we're one of the top soaring locations in the world. They get the conditions that, here, that they need to do these tests. They cannot do the, the, the high-altitude flights here, because they, for the high-altitude flights, they go down to the southern tip of Argentina and, um, use the polar vortex off of the, off of the southern pole. I'm not going to pretend to be able to explain the science behind that, um, but that's where they can do the, the high-altitude flights. But here, we have the soaring, the soaring conditions, so that they can get out and do some high-altitude flights with it, and, which is why they're based here. So that's one of the neat businesses that we have out there, um, and a number of others. But, uh, as you pointed out, Skydance and, so, yes, thank you for coming out for that tour, and I would like to extend that invite to all of the commissioners again. Please feel free to give me a call, um, set up a time, take you around, show you the facilities, and also to the public. Anybody who, it's, it, this is the county's airport. This isn't, this isn't a private club, it's a, it's an airport. And, um, as I've said, when we do tours with, um, like Leadership Douglas County, I always introduce people and say, welcome to your airport. This is a county facility, so we love to take people for tours and show them the facilities and show them the airport.
Do you get young kids, like high school kid groups or something like that, that go out there and visit the airport?
Actually, we do a number of, uh, events every year. We used to do what was called Sixth Grade Aviation Days, where we bring all of Douglas County's sixth graders out to the airport over the space of about three days, and, um, put them through a program where they went to different stations and learned about aviation. It's very, it's a good program, because when you ask kids about aviation, you want to be in aviation, they think pilot. And they don't understand that there's, for every pilot, there's probably 30 people out there making it, making it possible for the pilot to fly. So, um, we, we used to do that. Last year, that stopped for some weird COVID reason, but, uh, we hope to pick that up again and start doing Sixth Grade Aviation Days. And then also, the Sports Aviation Foundation does a program called the, um, Youth Aviation Adventure annually, which is where they bring a, a large group of kids out and, with a similar, uh, curriculum, where they come out and, and learn about aviation. And then also, we have the Build a Plane Program in the high school, which is where kids in high school are out there, and it, that's in one of our T-hangers, uh, these kids are building an aircraft. They're learning about how to build an aircraft, and they're actually hands-on building this aircraft, under very close supervision, of course. But, um, what the program does is it builds an aircraft, it teaches kids how, you know, how flight structures work, how flight controls work, about aerodynamics, about, um, the, the structural build of aircraft, the, the engines, and it helps them to get into, into the aircraft side and the A&amp;P side of, of aviation. Once they finish that aircraft, they'll sell it and use the proceeds to buy another one and continue the program. So that's also a great program that we've got, and it's running through the high school.
Excellent. Uh, Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your, uh, good report. I had an opportunity to listen to this a couple of months ago in a Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and I appreciate, appreciated it then, and I enjoyed it this time. I don't know if the public is aware of it or not, but I, previous to being a commissioner, of course, I sat waving in the back, and this screen was, was terrible to look at. So I don't know if the public understands that we've actually upgraded all the audiovisual equipment in this room, and, uh, so I, this is a lot easier to, to see now, and, uh, so I appreciate staff for getting that accomplished. Uh, I had a couple of questions. Uh, the, uh, you're indicating, uh, building that taxiway, uh, out on the east side, and, uh, I, I think that's a great idea for the future expansion of the airport. Uh, as you mentioned, uh, there's eighty current hangars, and at that time, a couple of months ago, you said there was an existing waiting list of fifty-four. Is that somewhat still in the, in the, in the neighborhood of fifty-four, or is it?
Um, I, I must have misspoke at that time, because it was sixty-four at the time, and we're actually up to sixty-five now.
Okay. So maybe I missed the number, so, yeah.
Yeah. And that, Chris Johnson, for the record, sorry, I keep talking on, without saying that. But, um, yeah, the, the list is growing. It, I would say that list is probably indicative of five percent now of, of the demand, because we get regularly, and I'm, this is no way an exaggeration, we get four to five people a day coming in asking for gliders, or, uh, for hangars, or they call and ask for hangars. It's, um, out of those, the majority of them say, okay, you know what, you don't have anything available, we'll go try Carson City. And, and just for the record, the airport, we do not, uh, compete with our airport businesses. So when people come in and ask us if we have a hangar, if the airport has a T-hanger, we, and we don't, we, we tell them, you know what, but we've got this business that has hangar space, we've got this business, this business, call them. And we, we send these customers out to all of our businesses, because we're here to, to, to make sure that our businesses are successful also. Unfortunately, all of us are just beyond capacity. So, um, they'll turn around and say, okay, well, we're going to try Carson City, or go up to Sted, and we tell them, okay, good luck. It's, everyone's running into the same problem right now, Avia, general aviation, and quite honestly, it's a lot of people fleeing from the very aviation-unfriendly territory to the west of us. So they have some pretty substantial taxes over there, and, and aviation is moving this way.
So, uh, are we, you're anticipating being able to accommodate that entire waiting list once we get that, once we get that going?
We've got some discussions, um, going on with some developers right now. Uh, we've got a large group of hangars that are potentially, they're at, in planning right now, and, um, we should be able to take care of a number of them, but definitely once the east side opens up, uh, based on discussions we're having, we should be able to accommodate them.
Okay. So, uh, I have heard a number of, you know, uh, public comments or rumors, so to speak, uh, and I haven't really done anything to follow up on it, but, uh, it's our understanding that the hangars that are in existence can only be used for aeronautical use. Is there any process or timeline or, or a standard inspection process by you or your staff to ensure that the existing tenants are actually in, using it for aeronautical use and not for other uses that would perhaps accommodate some of these people that are on the waiting list?
There is. Actually, we used to do annual inspections with East Fork, uh, go through and do fire inspections. Unfortunately, with COVID last year, we, that all fell off, and so these are all processes that we're bringing back into play right now. So, um, we do drive-through, we, we do drive-throughs and, and do point inspections right now as we drive-through, but, um, there are some hangars where, um, if they're not brought to our attention, then some people might, and we have to, again, go in there and remind them of the policy, that, um, this isn't just, this isn't just an airport policy. And, um, the rules and regulations that, um, that's one of the things that I just updated in the rules and regulations, because the FAA can be pretty vague about it, about, um, non-aeronautical use in the hangars. But the organizations that are nowhere near vague are the, um, state, local, and fire protection. And that's why in the rules and regulations, instead of listing out the prohibited uses, I've now pointed it towards those regulations, because those regulations, for example, um, the fire code prevents the storage of, of most flammable, flammable materials in there. So that is, um, something that we're getting back on now. Like I said, COVID kind of slowed it down. We weren't able to, to get things going with East Fork, and we didn't have the ability to do that, but we're getting back into those inspections again.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and I think maybe the last question I had was, um, I know when you talked, uh, at the Chamber of Commerce, you also indicated, we have a tremendous amount of traffic of powered and non-powered aircraft, one of the top air-soaring locations in the world, I, I understand. And you indicated, uh, that, uh, there was a potential of pursuing a, a control tower with, with the FAA. Now, I, I know that that raises, uh, the, the hair on, on the back of, of many people in this community as to concerns whether or not a control tower would allow commercial flights into our, into our airport, and, and as I understood it, that was not the purpose of this, but, uh, a, a non-commercial FAA control tower that would help mitigate possible issues between powered and non-powered aircraft. Uh, so i- is, are you pursuing that as well?
You know, uh, Chris Johnson, for the record, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up, because that's, that is one of those topics that, um, when brought up in the wrong way, I, I will have people hunting me down the streets. So it's, um, the first thing I want to say is, a control tower is not airlines, period. It's their, for example, Truckee. Truckee has a control tower, they do not have airlines. A control tower is 100% safety. And right now, we are one of those interesting airports that has a mix of, we've got rotary ring, rotary wing, which is helicopter, we've got gliders. As you mentioned, we are one of the top three soaring locations in the world, and if you ask a lot of glider pilots, we are the top soaring location in the world. Uh, every year, we have gliders come from around the world, Germany, France, Italy, uh, Japan, they come here just to come soar in Minden, and, um, and they ship their gliders here. So it's a substantial cost, but they still do it, because they want to come fly here in this area. We also have powered traffic, fixed wing, we have corporate traffic, we have fire attack aircraft, which come in regularly, whenever we have a fire, they come here to base, and then we've got our flight school, um, we get light sport trikes, I mean, we get a, we've have a huge mix of traffic, and we have skydivers. Normally, that would be bad enough in and of itself, but we also have two runways that are active at all times and intersect. Normally, when you have multiple runways in, in use at one time, they're, they're parallel. Our runways intersect in the middle. So our gliders primarily take off of runway three zero, and our power traffic regularly takes off of three four. That creates a lot of tension, and it, and it really doesn't. It's not as bad as I make it out to seem, because everybody communicates, and, um, communicates on the, on the radio, and they talk to each other, and that's how we maintain, uh, order out there, and it works very well. What a, a tra, an air traffic control tower will do, it will, it'll give somebody there in, in the sky, or someone in that tower, view over the big picture and be able to, to point out to everybody what's going on. Because right now, if I'm on downwind for runway three four, I don't know if, if somebody is right behind me, if their radio isn't working, or if something's going on like that, they might be communicating with me, and I'm not hearing them. But a control tower will, will take care of that, so that, that controller can say, hey, by the way, you've got an aircraft a mile off your nose, heads up. Also, um, we get a number of noise complaints, and, um, when I say a number of them, it's, it's actually a relatively very small number, considering the number of aircraft operations we have out there, it's a tiny number. But when people do control and they, uh, call and they say, hey, that airplane just flew right over my house, I'm kind of like, that's what airplanes do, you know, and, um, we, as I tell people, once an aircraft departs the airport, they're out of our jurisdiction. If, if an aircraft is flying, um, we, we regularly get a call about, um, about an aircraft doing aerobatics, which, um, most people will see an aircraft doing steep turns and call that aerobatics. But they'll call us, and we tell them, you have to call the FAA. We can't, we can't do anything. If you would like, we can call the FAA, but we're going to have to point them back to you. So, um, a control tower would give those controllers the ability to direct those aircraft. So right now, we have a noise abatement program that asks pilots, says, say, please be a good neighbor, take off, turn to a heading of three two zero to avoid, um, overflying the residential, residential area to the north. An air traffic control tower could say, take off runway three four, turn to a heading of three two zero. It's no longer an option, they have to do that. So that would be a big benefit of a tower, but, um, honestly, a tower is safety. And if I really want to play devil's advocate here and say, let's just imagine that somebody wants to bring airlines in here, how many direct flights can you get on Southwest Airlines out of Reno? Five, six, seven? I, I'm, I'm guessing here, but it's not a huge number, and that's because we don't have the demand. It's not worth the cost for those airlines to provide those direct routes, because we don't have the demand here. So anyone who thinks that we want to put airlines in here, look at the demand. There isn't any. There would be nothing that could potentially support airlines down here. It would be a complete rebuild of the facilities. On that same note, people talk about the weight-bearing capacity of the, the runway, which is a fictitious number. We could land a 737 here, no problem. You would have to get all the people off, and you'd have to drain the tanks down to almost empty for them to take off, because with our density altitude here, the heat and the, and only having a 7,400-foot runway, they'd have to lighten that thing up pretty, pretty light to get it up to Reno, but we could land a 737 here. The, the weight capacity of the runway is a fictitious number. It's, it's a number that is based, we have what's called a, a pavement classification number, which is based on the composition of the runway and, and the subgrade and how the runway's built, and then aircraft have an aircraft classification number, and as long as that ACN is at or below our PCN, then, then an aircraft can land there. Good example of that is a 727 at 160,000 pounds would eat our runway for breakfast, and that's because of the runway configuration, whereas a C-17 weighing 450,000 pounds could land there all day and not even bother it, so.
I, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I did have one other quick question, but, uh, if, if you were to go down that route and you were able to secure a, a FAA control tower, what would that cost the county?
That would be part of the capital improvement program. So that would be, we would, um, the FAA would probably fund most of that if, um, it would be part of our capital improvement program, so we would, if anything, we would have a 6.25% match on that. But that would probably be a, a federally funded.
But as I understand it, they would man it, there would be no cost to the county for manning that on it?
That's my understanding, yes, from talking to, uh, talking to them, that is, that is my understanding correct.
These are some things I think that, that the, the people in the, in the public need to hear, so.
Sure, sure. And, um, yeah.
Thank you.
Specifically finance over there saying, wait, they're going to add more people to staff, but, no, it's, um, it's, um, that would, is all a federal program, so they, um, and that's where, that's where it's at right now. Airport, we're not pushing for a control tower, the FAA has reached out to us and said, hey, you- The FAA has reached out to us and said, "Hey, you really need a control tower." So, they're, they're looking into it now and doing a study on it now to see, I always say how feasible it is, but it's, I think it's more at a point where they're saying how badly they want to get it in here and how quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kate?
I just want to add a little tidbit of information to this discussion before we move on. In the capital improvement program, you also approved reconstruction of Airport Road from Hayborn into the parking lot of the airport. And I just wanted to let you know that this morning, July 1, the first day the money was available, I approved a contract for the geotechnical work on Airport Road as a first step to getting that project done. And we're well aware of the timeline to try to get this done. Well, we will get this done before the airshow comes next year.
There you go, Mr. Johnson. It's on the way.
Yeah, I'm, Chris Johnson, for the record, I'm very aware of that project. That's one of the, the one of, one thing that indicates the financial stability and the condition of the airport is, we're able to fund that. The airport will be funding that project.
Well, we could probably go on all afternoon talking about all of this, but we have other items we have to attend to.
By all means.
We certainly appreciate your presentation and the information provided. It's, it's just a little gem that the county happens to have out there. So, you're doing a good job, and your staff, it's a fascinating operation. So, once again, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, I want to extend the invite to come out anytime you want to tour, show you the facilities. Thank you for the time.
We're going to take, we'll take a few-minute break, about 15 minutes. Come back here at a quarter of 3:00. Can we bring the meeting back to order? Commissioner Rice and Commissioner, Mr. Slade, excuse me. All right, community development, item number two, proposed possible action. Presentation on the Douglas County Code Title 20-560, Building Permit Allocation System to Include Building Permit Allocation System to include the presentation of the building permits and allocations issued in the past and the projection for the future. The Board may provide comments and direction to staff to bring the future agenda item related in the Building Permit Allocation and Growth Management to, for consideration. Mr. Booth and Mr. Delaire, you have the floor. And this will be open for public comment afterwards.
Good afternoon Chairman and members of the Commission. Sam Booth, Deputy Director of Community Development. This afternoon with our Director, Tom Delaire. Happy to be here to speak to you today about the growth management and allocation, building allocation system and Title 20.560 of Douglas County Code. As I indicated in your packet and the action sheet on this item, the Community Development Department tracks subdivision development and building allocations that are issued according to this section of code and the growth management ordinance. Tom and I have heard comments and questions from the Board about your desire to review this, this particular section of code. And I think it's a timely discussion in that the ordinance itself requires a five-year review, periodic review of the ordinance of the growth management system, how it's working, and an update and report from the department. And I have put some details into the, into your packet about that, that this is a report that the department has done in 2011 and as well in 2016 and 17 with the draft master plan update. So I think we're right on schedule for, for doing another review of this section of code. Just to give you a little bit of background about the ordinance, and I heard Mr. Slade's comments during opening public comment, and, and I know he was around for part of this process, but the ordinance was put in place by the county following discussion with the Sustainable Growth Initiative approved by the voters in 2002. And there was litigation surrounding that and basically between 2002 and 2008. But ultimately in 2007, the county approved this ordinance, the Building Permit Allocation and Growth Management Ordinance. And in 2008, during the general election, the voters approved an advisory question approving the ordinance as well. So we have it now incorporated into County Code Title 20.560. And as I said, it requires periodic review. The ordinance and subsequent resolutions do exempt projects, and there's a list of projects that are exempt from the ordinance. Those were established prior to the development of the ordinance. And since the adoption of the ordinance in 2007, there have been two ordinances that the Board has approved, changing some procedures that relate to it. The first one in 2008 allowed for vested projects that had development agreements which were extended to remain exempt. So if they were exempt because they had a development agreement and they were extended by the Board, they could remain exempt for the allocation system, as well as exempting certain agricultural parcels from the allocation provision. And in 2009, there was an ordinance that in response to excess allocations, it changed the way that the department issues the allocations in that the original ordinance dictated that allocations would be distributed quarterly. And that was quarterly based on the fiscal year. So as we've talked about earlier today, July 1st is the first day of the fiscal year. So this would be the first quarter to issue allocations. Very troublesome to track, not just the department, but the public commissioners and, and developers. And I think in 2009, because there was an excess demand or there was an excess pool of allocations, the Commission said, okay, we don't need to issue these quarterly now. Let's move to issuing them annually and per calendar year. What the ordinance did and what the voters approved was to establish a 2% growth rate that is compounded annually, and it was established over a 50-year time period. In the ordinance, and that table is in your packet, you can see the exact number of allocations that are designated for each year, but that starts out at a number of 317 allocations in 2007, and that gradually increases over that 50-year time period up to about 837 allocations that would be available in 2056 at the end of the timeframe. That number was arrived upon based on the population estimates and projections of population at that 2% rate. And then what they did was to divide the population by 2.5, because at the time the ordinance was generated, they knew that in Douglas County, there were 2.5 persons on average per household. So they took the population, they divided it by people per household, and that's how they came up with the number of allocations and number of building permits and units that should be approved each year. So over that 50-year timeframe, there's a total of 26,812 allocations available. So that would be 26,812 new residential units that would be available. Out of that number, 4,773, or roughly 17.8%, are reserved for vested projects. Those projects that we said per resolution and per the ordinance are vested and don't need an allocation. They reserved a portion of the allocations to take into account the fact that they knew there were projects previously approved. And so then that remains, or leaves 22,000 available for project and individual allocations. And you'll see that in your packet in a chart that we have, and I can also pull that up as we, as we progress through the discussion. The ordinance discusses two types of allocations. There are project allocations, and those are for lots that are approved within a subdivision or a planned development. Essentially, that's any, any development that's over five lots in size is either a subdivision or a planned development. And individual allocations are lots approved via a parcel map, which is just four lots or less. I wanted to show the Commission, Tom and I have put together some historical data on building permits and the value of single-family dwellings and just the, the number of permits issued, I think is what this chart is, is showing you. What you can see, we have it broken down by decade. And then towards the top of the screen, and I apologize, it is a small size for you to see, we're showing the permits issued in the 90s. And on average, it, it jumped around 500 to 600 towards the end of the decade, the upper 400 numbers for single-family dwelling permits issued. And in the 2000s, that continued and actually increased in the 500 and 600s until, of course, we know in 2008, the Great Recession hit. And you can see those numbers dropping from the 500s down to in 2008, only 48 single-family dwellings were constructed or permits were issued for construction. And then, starting in 2010, and that's the bottom column there, you can see that we have gradually increased back to, for 2020, we issued 200 building permits for single-family dwellings. So that, that has been steadily increasing. I think the, the thing that you can take away from this chart, number one, is that we were in the 500 and 600s in the late 90s and early 2000s as far as the number of building permits being issued. And again, as I said, last year, at the height of, of returning from the recession, we're at 200. This chart is just visually showing you what the, what the last one was describing there. Again, you can see on the west side of the chart, and, and this is just starting in year 2000, those very high numbers of building permits being issued. This is showing total permits, which includes not just single-family dwelling permits, but manufactured home permits, multifamily permits, commercial permits, everything together there. But in black, those bars are the single-family dwellings. In 2002, at the, the peak, there were 672 single-family dwellings issued. As I said, in 2008, there were 48. And then you can see, I've, I've listed the numbers there for the last few years. 2018, we, we did somewhat of a peak at 235, and we dropped off a little bit. So far this year through the end of May, we have 133 permits issued. So not being quite halfway through the year, at least when, when this was tabulated, we're on track at least to potentially exceed the 200 that we issued last year. I've mentioned about the vested and non-vested lots that the ordinance calls out, vested lots where those approved prior to the ordinance, or those that have a development agreement in place, so they're not subject to the allocation system. Today, our tracking system shows that vested lots remain at 2,459. And I, I told you earlier, in 2007, when the ordinance was first created, there were about 4,700 vested lots that were available at that time. So we have reduced that down by about 2,200 since 2007. Non-vested lots remaining, we have 3,959 on the books today. What we have seen since the inception of the ordinance is that vested lots, those older projects, are used up at around an average of 101 per year. And that's a, that was estimated from the past five years. So if that trend continues, we believe it'll take about 25 years for those vested lots to build out.
Excuse me, Mr. Booth. For the audience, would you explain the definition of vested as it relates to this?
Yes, thank you Chairman Engels. The vested lots were subdivisions, planned developments, specific plans, properties and developments that had entitlements approved prior to 2007, when the ordinance was approved, and 2008, when the voters approved the ordinance, as well as projects that have development, that had development agreements in place when the ordinance was put into effect. And, and to take that further, so what the ordinance did was to say that they're vested, meaning they are not subject to the allocation system. They don't need to physically obtain an allocation from the building department.
Excuse me, sir. Would you explain to us why development agreements are not subject to 560? I'm talking new developments now, not the ones that we got saddled with here a little while back, but new developments. Development agreements, rather.
Now, I might refer to the District Attorney's Office for that Commissioner Noas ad. I, again, I think it's a conversation about, those were agreements that the Commissioners signed and contracts between the Commission and individual developers where the county was seeking something and the developer was seeking something. New, if I, if I misspoke previously, my understanding is that new development agreements are subject to the ordinance, to the, to the allocation system. The development agreements I'm speaking to are those ones that were prior to the ordinance.
Of course, yeah, we signed it and it's a done deal.
Sam, I, sorry, Mr. Chair. Okay. So I, I think it's important to stop here for just a second, and, and those vested projects, as I understand it, there's 1,020 that are in the Virginia Ranch Development Agreement of this, of this 2,459. So 1,020 are in the Virginia Ranch. Where do the, can you tell me where the other big blocks of, of homes are in that, in that vested? I, I think it's important that our public understand, you know, basically that those were vested and we really don't have any jurisdiction pretty much over those.
Thank you Commissioner Gardner, Sam Booth, with Community Development for the record. In your packet, I've, I've included a subdivision list, and that's what, that's what I'm referring to in front of me here. So you're correct that one of the very largest subdivisions or developments that's vested is the Virginia Ranch Project, 1,020 units in Gardnaville. I can, I can just go down the list here. One of the other larger ones would be Clear Creek. We have some smaller ones, the cottages at Indian Hills in the Ranch, or, excuse me, that's in Indian Hills. There's also the cottages at Carson Valley and the Rancho's. The Ranch at Gardnaville, also known as Hayborn Meadows, that is at the end of Gilman, that currently building north to Zero Lane. It's also on the south side of Buckeye, building south down towards Zero Lane. Nevada Northwest, specific plan, that's in Minden, near the, the new McDonald's that was constructed, Lucerne, Ironwood, Santa Anita, I think is the new road in there. That area was a specific plan that was approved prior to the ordinance, and so the developments, there's, there's several different pieces of that specific plan that are building out in there. I said the Ranch at Gardnaville, let's see, I think those are, I think those are the major ones. A lot of these other ones are smaller in the unit numbers, but-
Yeah, we didn't need to go down the individual ones. I just, I just, the, the big chunks, so people understand where those-
Yeah, sure.
Where those big chunks are.
And that's, and that's page 314 in your packet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we've talked about project allocations being required for subdivision lots or planned development lots, and individual allocations are used for those smaller four lots or less developments.
Excuse me, can, can I interject for a second? I had my hand up and I didn't, I guess nobody met, saw it. But before we move on from the development agreements, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Tarkanian, you have the floor.
Can you tell me, or can you let us know, maybe you don't have it today, but let the Board know, let's say the top five development agreements meeting that have the most allocations out there, when these development agreements end? You know, I'm a little confused about when these things terminate. It's my understanding from staff that there is an end date on these, but I can't seem to find out when the end date is. I just don't think development agreements should be going on 30 or 40 years without actions being taken. Is that something you guys could provide for us before our next meeting?
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Tarkanian, Sam Booth, for the record. I think we are, we are tracking a table of development agreements. As, as the Commission may remember, I've presented some information that the Department has to present every 24 months, a review of certain development agreements, and those are on a rolling basis. So as we present those, we, we dive into the details of each, each agreement on its own. I can, I can do my best to get that list to you with the expiration of each, each agreement. I think where, where things can get tricky is that I think in the last round of development agreements that I discussed with the Commission, we talked about some of the development agreements along Mueller Parkway, and the Virginia Ranch Development Agreement was one of those that the original approval had a certain date set to it. There were amendments to some of those agreements, and then ultimately what happened was there was, there was litigation, and there was a settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement extended the approval of the development, which was, I believe was approved in 2004. And the settlement agreement said that the, that the original approval was extended for another 30 years. And so that project in general was extended out 30 years, and that was, that was just, you know, a, a part of the process of the litigation. That wasn't from the original, you know, the Planning Commission approval or Board approval at that time. That was just part of that discussion there. We have other agreements that are similar, in a similar situation, I believe, where there were amendments to the development agreements. Maybe the developer sought something else from the county, or the county was seeking something else from the developer and extended the timelines for those. But as I said, I can, I can do my best to get that list presented to the Commission and, and the dates that each of those expire.
Mr. Booth, may I? So we have developments that are vested, and we have other developments that are not vested. Is that basically the two groups?
Yes, Commissioner, Sam Booth, for the record, those are, those are essentially the two, two groups, yes. the two, two groups, yes. Would you like me to continue, Chairman? Would you like me to continue, Chairman?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you, and Sam Booth, for the record, once again. Each of those individual allocations and those project allocations that the ordinance describes are used for different types of developments. Those, the ordinance allows those to accrue in their respective pools at the end of each year. So if a, if a develop, or, excuse me, if a number of allocations are issued by the ordinance at the beginning of the year, and all of those allocations are not used up, those are then rolled over into their respective pool. So the project allocations and individual allocations, because the ordinance was approved in 2007 while we were in a recession, or at the, at the very beginning of a recession, in those early years of the ordinance, many of the allocations were not used. And so those did roll over into their pools, and then those are compounded each year as more allocations were unused in subsequent years there. So that being said, today, the individual pool of allocations stands at 1,452, and the project pool of allocations sits at 584. This year, 2021, is the first year that the pool has been reduced due to excess allocations being issued over the number that we're giving out in that year. So the pool has, I guess, how we, how we issue those allocations is from the pool first, but I can show you the table that we have in the packet here that describes that. Let me see, I believe I have it here. So this is our residential allocation tracking table that the department uses to track the growth management system and the allocations that are given out in any year. Let me see if I can fix this for Zoom. Okay, yeah. Okay, this table here is our residential allocation tracking table, and you can see the, the number of allocations, starting on the top left side of the chart, number of allocations that were issued in 2007, and as I mentioned, the ordinance allowed that to be 317 for that very first year.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Booth, what page is this on?
Let's see. I believe that's packet, page 312, Commissioner Noesad.
Thank you.
So in the first year, in 2012, there were 317 allocations available to be distributed. Those allocations, and the ordinance dictates this, they're broken out between the individual allocations and the project allocations. The ordinance describes that 70% of the allocations available in that year are to be, to be used for individual allocations, and in the chart here, that's the green column. So you can see the individual allocation column is 70%, and the project allocation column is 30%. That's the blue column on the screen here as well. The first thing that the ordinance did to that 317 number, and I should back up and describe that, is that, as we said initially, when the ordinance was approved, there were 4,700 allocations that were, or, excuse me, units that were vested, and the county knew that those projects were going to be building out. And what they did in the ordinance was to say that, they estimated that it would take 25 years for those developments, those pre-existing developments to build out. And to account for that, they reduced the number that's available to be distributed to new projects by 47%. So in this table, the number that was first given out by the ordinance was 317. That number is reduced by 47%, or 149, and what we're left with is the distributed allocations that the department has available to give out to anyone seeking an allocation. So that number in, in the first year is actually only 168. And you can see in the chart that that continues for the first 25 years.
Sam, before we go any further there, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. When I look at that number, and I know it's a minor correction, but if we have 66 available this year, and we've already issued 75, then the subtraction out of the project allocation pool should be a number of nine, not eight. So that number should be 583. Am I, am I mistaken on that? Am I, am I reading that wrong?
No, what you're describing there is correct, and I see that. Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I appreciate, I appreciate the correction there. And that may be due to, you know, of course, this table is live and is updating as we issue allocations, you know, each day. And so I was feverishly trying to get this updated to include in your packet, so I'll note that, I appreciate it, Commissioner. That's a good point there. So I've described that the initial number that the ordinance gives out is reduced by 47%.
Could that be a rounding error, since there's a percentage involved in the calculation?
Uh, oh yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Delaire, for the record, yeah, I believe so. In Excel, we have hidden all of the decimal points on this table, so I'm sure that's exactly what the problem is.
So after we have the reduction of the total number that's, that's given out by the ordinance, we arrive at the distributed allocations that are available to be given out in a given year. And then that, that number, which is in the red column here, is divided between the individual allocations and the project allocations. And as I said, 70% go to individuals. That would be, you know, on a day-to-day basis, that's typically someone who's coming in to build a custom home on a lot they've purchased. We see a lot of these in the East Valley area, Fish Springs, Johnson Lane as well. And so 70% of all the allocations go to those units, and then only 30% are remaining for project allocations. Again, the projects are subdivisions or planned developments. So you can see just exactly what happened in that first year. There were 50 project allocations that were available to distribute, and zero were issued. Again, that was 2007, so there wasn't a high demand for allocations at the time. There were 20 that were agricultural parcels that required an allocation, but as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, there was an ordinance that exempted some agri, certain agricultural parcels from needing a project allocation. We still account for those in our pool here. And so essentially, 50 were given out for the year, 20 were used by agricultural parcels, and what we're left with is 30 remaining. And so that 30 rolled into the project allocation pool in the first year. And as you follow that down the table, in the, in the second year, 2008, 52 were available, 20 were issued once again, so 32 rolled over, and now we had the pool growing to 62. And again, you can see how that project allocation pool and the individual allocation pool have grown over the years, and here we are at 2021. As I said, there's 1,452 in the individual allocation pool, and there's 584 in the project allocation pool.
Mr. Chair, is it okay for us to ask questions as we go through this, rather than try to save up our questions to the end? I think it's more appropriate when we have these charts in front of us to ask questions that reflect directly to that chart.
Go ahead and ask your questions.
Thank you. So, Mr. Booth, as I see this, this is the first year since this ordinance has been in effect, that we've actually allocated all of the project allocations in any particular year. This year, we're, as the chart shows, we're already nine over, and we're only five months, basically, well, May 31st, I guess, so five months into the year. And then we have an existing pool, as you're indicating, of 584. Is there any restrictions on how deep the projects or the developers can go into that particular project allocation pool on an annual basis? Is there any restrictions in this ordinance in that regard?
Thank you Commissioner Gardner, Sam Booth, for the record. You beat me to the conclusion of the presentation. That was, that was the point I was going to end on today, which is, this is, this is the first year that we have issued more than that 30% that are available for projects. I think, I think part of that is, as you can imagine, when the ordinance was first approved, most of the lots or developments that were ready to be available for construction at that point were ones that had been approved years prior, and they were moving forward for building permits, the vested projects. And then, of course, we had the recession, not many projects were needing allocations at those times. But now you've seen newer projects since 2002 that have been approved, got the zoning, subdivision maps in place, their maps recorded, and have finally moved to the construction phases, and I think that's why we've seen those gradually increase, really just in the last few years, because you can see that column was empty for quite a few years there. So you're correct, this is the first year we have exceeded that, and no, there's not a limit that the, that the ordinance has on the number that can be pulled from the pool. And the ordinance actually specifies that the way we issue the permit is we issue it from the pool first. So what, so we issue from the pool first before we get to that, that number that's available for the given year. So theoretically, based on, you know, on those rules and how we do that, someone could pull 584 allocations out of the pool this year, and then we would be looking at, okay, we have 66 that were given, given out.
So, Mr. Booth, I gotta get used to this microphone. It's very complex. I mean, it's gonna take a, an accountant to figure this out. What's wrong with saying, okay, just as a starting number, say 500, and then say, okay, we find out that all 500 are taken, and then the next year, we apply a percentage increase based on population, and that could probably be 504. So next year, they do 500. Now we've got five, we've got 1,000 houses going in and digging holes in to suck up the water, but we're gonna carry over four into the other pool. Why, why do we do that? Why do we accumulate those? That's, that's compound interest.
Thank you Commissioner Noesad, Sam Booth, for the record. I can't speak to, you know, with the reasoning behind the ordinance that it was approved, I wasn't, wasn't with the county at that time in 2007. I think generally, the idea is that, as I first, first pointed you to, the allocation system was generated around a population projection, and then dividing that population projection by the number of people per homes, to get to a number of units over a 50-year period that were acceptable. And so I think the idea is that even if those units weren't used in a particular year, that if they're used in a future year, it's still under, under that 2% growth cap. So you're not exceeding that cap. Even if we were to issue these allocations, you know, all of these today, they're allocations that the ordinance would have allowed to be issued in previous years.
What I'm arguing with about is the act of actually moving the, the allocations that are remaining at the end of the year, say, and you save those. I say you don't save those.
Sure, sure.
I say start the following year with the same 500 plus the 2% and go from there. If those 500 are used up, we still have the other two, they're gone too. The following year, 2% on what was 504. It's a lot simpler. I mean, we, we get into vested, unvested, project agreements, and a lot of other various categories you have that just simply confound this whole thing, and if you take the normal person who walk in that door right now and you explain that to him, he would go, he'd glaze over. So why don't we look at an idea of perhaps simplifying this code, as opposed to going on and on and on, about with five columns and a rounding error and all this other stuff that you have to worry about? That's just my input.
So, Mr. Chair, I had an additional question. So, Sam, you indicated that the projects, the project pool includes multifamily residences, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so for instance, we have a project that's going in, I'm not sure whether or not it's a condo project or an apartment complex, that's going in behind guns and ammo on 395, and that, I'm not sure exactly how many units that is. Maybe, maybe 20 units, but there's maybe four buildings going in there, or five units each, or, or something of that nature. My numbers might be a little skewed, but...
Yeah, Commissioner Gardner, this is Sam Booth. That, that project you're referring to is called Thoroughbred Crossing. There's 20 units approved there. I believe it's four buildings with five units in each building.
Right, that's what I was thinking.
And that is subject to the allocation system and does need allocations. We have issued some allocations to that developer already.
My, my question relates to the allocations for that, you know, I'm just using that as an example, but basically, what you're saying is that there's 20 units, five units each going into four buildings. So are they issued one per, one allocation for each building, or one allocation per each unit? So basically, if there, if it's going to be 20 units, and that, that would be the difference between five, or 20 allocations versus five allocations.
Yes.
Or four allocations.
Thank you Commissioner, this is Sam Booth again. It is an allocation for each individual unit. Unit meaning living, living quarters includes, so each apartment requires that, so that Okay, if you'll allow me, I'll move from the table back to the presentation and a few points I had here remaining to make. We talked about the pools, we've talked about the table. What I wanted to show you was just a chart that is visually describing what we had in the table. See, it looks like we're on the wrong screen here. Okay, what, what this chart is showing you is the residential permits issued versus the allocations available. So we talked previously about the building permit numbers over the years. That line is represented by the blue line on the graph here. The gray line there at the center of the graph is the 2% growth and the number of allocations that the growth management ordinance allows for each year. And so as I said, it started out at 317, you can see that on the far left side, increasing by 2% each year. The red, the red line on the graph is after you account for the 47% reduction for the vested projects. And so you can see from the gray line there, it's reduced down to the red line, and those are the allocations that we're allowed to, to give out to new projects each year. But the point being, as we discussed with Commissioner Gardner, you can see that the permits issued, the blue line, has always remained below the gray line, which is the allocation system allowed. We did in 2018 exceed just that number that was available for projects or individual allocations, but that's because you also would add some of those vested projects that were issued there. But at no time has, has the, the permits issued ever exceeded the allowance, or even come close to, the allowance that the growth management ordinance has anticipated. So that's the first point I have on this slide, is that the system has been in existence for 15 years, and to date, the amount of allocations has not exceeded the amount distributed for that year. Of course, we talked about the downturn in the economy in 2008 and subsequent years. That created less demand, resulting in a pool of excess. of excess allocations that we're left with today. However, staff believes that due to the amount of approved projects ready to move to construction of homes, the project pool of around 584 units will likely be used up within the next four to six years, based on that increase in, in permits that we're issuing over the past few years. Once that pool of 584 units is used, and also 1,400 units is, is there for individuals, but once the project pool is used, it will be limited to the number that's distributed just for projects, which in four to six years will be about 70 units per year. And that is gonna continue through 2031, when that 47% vested reduction falls away, and then we're available to issue the full current, full amount of allocations that the ordinance allows. So as I said at the very beginning, we wanted to discuss with you, the commission, what your, what your thoughts or ideas are about the ordinance itself. One thing to, to remind the commission that in the code itself, it discusses that any modification in the total number of allocations, or in that 2% growth rate, must be placed on the ballot by the county for an advisory vote prior to implementation. But we're here today because we wanted to hear your comments about the system, and if you have any suggestions for us.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Mr. Delair and Mr. Booth, as you know, I've been very, trying to dissect this whole complex issue for a number of months now. We met in February, January and met again in February, and I'm glad that you finally brought this to us to take a look at this. Recognizing the whole purpose, going all the way back to the Sustainable Growth Initiative, I think it's, you know, the whole intent, as I saw it back 13, 14 years ago, was to ensure that we had our proper amount of infrastructure in place to handle the growth that, that was occurring then and, and perhaps in the future. So in that, with that mindset, it's, it's paragraph number two here that, that really concerns me, that you've illustrated. And so, prior to this year, there's a clause in the ordinance that includes, I believe it's called banking and borrowing, as a section of this, and, and as you and I have talked about that. And I think Mr. Noesad recognizes that also, is the banking part of that. For the last 13, 14 years that this has been in existence, because we haven't reached the number of allocations, we've built up quite a bit of bank, you know, in not only the individual projects, but, or individual developers, and I don't want to use that word, the individuals that come forward with a building request, and our projects. So the, the number right now is 594 that we have available, and as you indicated earlier, we could dip into that pool and actually have that pool go away completely this year if, if somebody was real aggressive in that, and wanted to do that. And certainly, that would not be the spirit or the intent of the Sustainable Growth Initiative, and what's been brought forward since that time of the Growth Management Ordinance. So, and, and I, and I'm troubled with a term, and, and we've talked about it before, so it's not new to you. So when we talk about borrowing, we're not really borrowing, okay, we're withdrawing from the bank, from the pool, and we don't have any intentions of replacing it. So when you borrow something, you have an intention of bringing, taking, of paying it back. We have no intentions of doing that. So I, I would, I, I know this needs to be a deliberative process. I need, I know it needs to go before the public, and we need to have public outreach and, and public forums on this, and talk about the different changes that, that we're possibly anticipating in regards to the Growth Management Ordinance. But certainly, as I've already told you several months ago, that I'd like to take a look at possibly eliminating the, the banking part of it, and not allowing the rollover of unused allocations on an annual basis. I'd also like to make sure that in the spirit, again, of, of sustainable growth, that we don't overexceed our ability to provide the infrastructure necessary to, to handle the growth, not only, and a lot of people think that, that, that infrastructure is only roads, but it also includes our safety officers, our sheriff's department, our ability to deliver fire services, the ability to deliver the, the schools necessary to handle the growth. So all those things need to be taken into consideration when we approve growth. And so I would, I'd like us to, the board and, and the public to take a look at possibly restricting how deep we could go into that existing pool. And, and my thoughts are somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% a year, so that it would almost double the amount. But we're already exceeding it this year, and you're, and you're indicating that we might exceed it beyond that. But I'm thinking that, that we could have a restriction on how deep we could go into that, those pools by 10% a year. And then I'm also, I'd be interested in taking a look at a, you know, and Mr. Tarkanian has expressed this, and development agreements and things of that nature, but maybe we need to take a look. It also has sunset date of, of those pools, so that when, when we get to that date, if, if the developers haven't come forward and produced the product for our community, that maybe those pools need to evaporate or sunset. So those are, those are the basic tweaks that I'm looking at on this, and I don't think it involves the 2%, and it doesn't involve the number of allocations that are available. And so I'm not, I'm not sure that it would necessarily need to go before an advisory vote of the people. And I think this is something that, that's pretty a hot tops, a hot topic in, in our community. And the next time we would have an opportunity would be perhaps November of 2022, and I'm not sure that we want to delay this that long. So without delaying, you know, without tapping into that, or adjusting that 2% or the, or the, or the amount that's available, I, I think we might be able to do that. Now that's something that we would have to get concurrence on with legal counsel. Would that be correct, Ms. Gregory?
Sure. Any suggestion today that eventually would have to, would come forward would need to be vetted through the DA's office with regards to the code and, and moving forward. Yes.
Ms. Gregory, I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence.
Is this self-perpetuating for all perpetuity, or is there some endpoint when the Slow Growth Initiative wouldn't be in effect anymore?
So I think that the question is somewhat twofold. Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. It was an initiative petition in 2002. The ordinance was adopted in 2007. Initiatives can be changed within five years after the vote. Obviously, we're way past that, even if you take into consideration the 2007 adoption of the ordinance. But the code does anticipate this, this section expiring on its own via 2056, because they, they did it for 50 years. So does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Unfortunately, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Noesad.
Yes, I just want to make it clear what I, where I stand on this. I stand on having any, get rid of all that stuff that adds up to 27,000 homes additional by 2056. And let's start with an allocation of 500. Okay, developers, come and grab them. When you're all done getting all 500, we're done for the year. The next year, we take 500 as that starting point, times 2%, which is what was agreed to by the SGI, and run that for the year. And if the, the total of 504 then is not allocated, is not taken up by developers, and it comes to the end of the year, poof, those are gone. And we start over again with 504. That's the way I'd like to see it done. Banking and borrowing? Yeah, get rid of it.
Basically, this is gonna come down to a legal, legal questions and legal matter. And Ms. Gregory, what latitude does the board have in regard to making adjustments to this initiative?
So Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Under the current terms of the ordinance, if you're going to raise the 2% growth rate, or the total number, or change the total number of the 26,000, it would have to go to an advisory vote of the people. Those are the two sticking points under the current ordinance as written. So if you were going to change the total number, up or down, or change the percentage, under the current ordinance, it would have to go back to an advisory vote of the people.
Under the advisory vote of the people, could this entire thing be dissolved?
Yes, potentially. It's advisory, so it depends on what the board would want it to do. So if you wanted to get rid of the Growth Management Ordinance, you certainly could do that. It would require that it go to a vote of advisory vote of the people, and then the board could take action as it sees fit.
Reason I ask this is that, when this was drafted, it's a long time ago, and so much has changed in our county. And one of the things that is a huge consideration is the demand on our water. And so to just have this self-perpetuating on until 2050, it seems to be a little bit of a, out of bounds. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
I have a couple of questions. First, in the projections that you gave us, and then you stated at the very end, that the vested projects will be finished by 2031. But you stated earlier in your presentation that you still had about 25 years left of these vested projects with the current rate that they're using. Isn't that correct?
That's, that's correct, Commissioner Tarkanian. This is Sam Booth.
So, so this is, this is one of the problems I see with this. We have these development agreements that are going back before 2007, or reserving a bunch of these building permits for, for them. And it was supposed to be used up by '31, and now talking about it being used up by 2040. Instead of other products that are might be more viable, and that are maybe better products in today's environment, with people that are out there. So there's a problem I see with how those are being allocated. Second, when you talk about the pool, which is what Commissioner Gardner referred to as banking, these excess allocations or these pools, you have 584 in the project, and you have 1,452 in the individual. So you really have over 2,000 of those that are out there that could be built at one time. Now, obviously, individuals are gonna be a lot less likely to use up those that they're pooled in the project. But I assume future boards aren't gonna be restricted on changing those pools from individual to, to project. So there's a lot of these out there, and I share the concern of, of the other commissioners, that in any given year, there can be a huge number that are being built out there, far more than what the initial initiative voted on in the settlement agreement that was done later. So there's a couple really main issues here, and this is an important, I would think, in the last election, this is probably the most important issue that was out there for the voters, and some serious consideration needs to be taken by the board in how we're gonna address these. And that was all I had to say. Thank you very much.
For the record, Commissioner Gardner, the table, in the, the number of allocations that are given out for each year, in 2007, they said, we believe that these vested projects will build out in 25 years. And so as I described, the table reduces the amount of allocations by 47% for the first 25 years. And after that, in the, in 2032, that 47% reduction falls off. So if you look at the table, the number that would be available to distribute in 2032 goes from 271 to 520 because of that massive increase there, because they're assuming that the vested projects are, are gone, and now every project is going to need an allocation today that would, that would be subject to the system. My point earlier in, in the slides was that we still have roughly 2,500 vested projects, and at the rate we've seen them build out, we think it could be another 25 years before those build out. Either, you know, you could extend the reduction to account for vested projects for additional time, because we know those are there. Or I think maybe what I heard from Commissioner Tarkanian was that all, you know, that essentially all developments should just be subject to the allocation system. So we shouldn't extend the vesting, we should just bring that number, maybe not allow that to continue to 2031, but allow the vested projects to be subject to the system, and then the full allocations to be, to be issued.
Thank you. I, I was looking at it in, in a different manner, and so I appreciate that explanation. Mr. Chair, I know we did express that we were gonna allow public comment, so I don't know what time, when you want to allow public comment, but, on this, but I think it's...
This is very convoluted. Let's open it for public comment. Oh, excuse me. Cynthia, Ms. Gregory?
So Cynthia Gregory from the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. So just to follow up on what Sam explained, what I think it's important to recognize is at the time that this was put in place, is those vested projects are actually exempt from the Growth Management Ordinance. They could have come in, those 4,000 units could have come in, they can come in at any time during this period of time, and they don't have to get an allocation. So that was just merely an accounting way to account for a certain percentage of those over a period of time. And the decision was that they should be accounted for upfront, right, rather than at the back end or half the 50 years. The public wanted to make sure, recognizing they're exempt, but they're still gonna be built. So let's take those away from the total number and account for those upfront. And that's why you have the first 25 years. But in actuality, they could come in next year and build all 4,000 homes, or they could come in in 2056 and build all 4,000 homes. So I just want to make sure that when you talk about vesting, it's not, okay, there was 100 this year and they were actually built. They're actually exempt. And this is just an accounting mechanism to make sure that they are counted in that 26,000, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing that, basically, that's called grandfathering, as I recall? Me being of the right age to be that.
Absolutely. And that was, the intent was to grandfather them. And then with regards to the development agreements, what's important to recognize in, in ours is that those development agreements, they freeze the code at the time they're approved unless you expressly say otherwise. So that's why those development agreements were exempted as part of this, is because they were required to be under the law.
And I'm sure, I'm sure that the current board, or the boards at that time, had no consideration of what effect it would have on water, safety, public education, traffic, et cetera. And that's, that looks like it's part of what's been missing on scrutinizing each and every project.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I, I think one thing that we have forgotten in this debate is that nothing is gonna be built unless we have the materials, and nothing is gonna be built unless we have the, the money to go forward with the development. And the, the way things are looking right now, you can't get lumber, you can't get hardly any building materials. I'm, I'm not greatly concerned that we're going to ever get our allotted amount of homes built in, in this county, because it's just not possible.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
Yeah. This is more, this is a question, I guess, for the legal counsel. And I understand what you're stating, that the development agreements were contractual rights that the previous boards had given to these developers. And as I've mentioned over and over again, I, I'm pretty stunned that there isn't a more certain and reasonable end date for those. But we certain and reasonable end date for those, but we can't do anything about that. But with respect to give them these rights, and where these development agreements go for as many years as they have, I would think from what you had stated, that the only thing that has to go back to the public for an advisory vote are if you reduce or add the number of allocations. I would think we would be able to restrict how many of these vested permits we're going to allocate each year, and not let one of these vested companies come in and build 1,000 of them at one time, and use up all the allocations for none of the new projects after they sat on it for 30 years.
Well, after what we've reviewed, this appears to me highly biased in favor of developers, and I don't know how the voters got conned into voting for it, but they did. So we've got to deal with it. Any other comments, public comment? Mr. Slade? Okay, all right, sir. Okay.
Oh, it's that one, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Dan Ainsworth. Lively conversation so far, and I can tell you that growth with water in the background and the GMO is probably the most discussed, and the most, maybe the most misunderstood topic in our county today. So I'm glad we're touching on a number of the topics. I'd like to get one thing clarified, and maybe Gregory or Ms. Gregory will back me up on this, but we're not talking about, we shouldn't be talking about banking and borrowing here in this ordinance. We're talking about basically the excess pool of allocations. Banking and borrowing in the ordinance is a device supposedly to be used by developers in development agreements, but it's never been used. And I would, it would be nice if we could get a response there, so we could focus on the right topic and the right terminology. So what we should be talking about is allocations and the excess pool. I've done a lot of homework this year by myself, and with a few key others, and with Tom and Sam, and with a couple of you, and so I have the following comments after my little opening routine there. I'll start with a controversial comment, maybe, that we really don't have an out-of-control growth problem at the moment. The building permit issuance, as you've been presented, annualizes at about 312 this year. So that, yes, that's higher than the last few years, but way, way below the prior years after the ordinance, or before the ordinance was put into place. The middle paragraph on your packet page 351, which you just were presented, is probably a good guess, and just for clarification, that the 584 pool and the 70 per year reference there is just for projects, not individual. Once again, backed up by a comment from our DA's office, you can't change the 2%, and you can't change the total number of allocations. So to me, any suggestion to get rid of the pool, or start over again, would be totally against the ordinance rules and regulations, and you have to go to the public to do that. And if you put in place any restriction on building right now, you'll probably face a number of lawsuits. Just my personal feeling. I'll go fast. Also, very importantly, you'll know a lot more about the water supply in two to three years, and can act with some definitive information in place if necessary. So my recommendation is very similar to, and almost the same as Commissioner Gardner's. We've actually discussed this a few months ago, and I think you'll hear this from another person in a minute or two, is that you limit the distribution of the current pools to 10% a year. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I know you could do 100 a year, you could do 10% a year, something in that general range will limit the issuance of allocations and hold project building back by definition. So it gives you a chance to get your water study in place, which will take two to three years, limit the building, and then you'll have some real definitive information about the topic that's so popular to be concerned about, and that's water. So 10% a year would be my recommendation on the excess distribution of the pools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ainsworth. Any further comments?
Dave Brady for the record. Jim has allowed me to go ahead of him, which is always a good move. First off, Mr. Chairman, I want to say thank you for indulging me with my earlier comments while they were redundant. I felt the need to get them on the record. When we go back 15 years, I was on the commission and chaired the committee for that entire year, and Cynthia Gregory was part of the group as well. By the way, we did all this with a slide ruler. Thought I'd lighten it up. All right, so a couple of things, just suggestions, observations. If anybody has seen Carson City's growth management ordinance, it's one page, seven sentences. No banking and borrowing, use it or lose it. One of the things that I'd like to suggest is that you look at the data that we have with respect to our population growth rate. I would abandon the 2% compounded and say, "Look, our growth rate over the last decade is 1.3%. Don't compound it, use 1.3%." Secondly, to your point, Mr. Now, said, "Get rid of the banking and borrowing, it's too confusing." You know, you do have vested projects that if, in fact, you tried to avoid using, allowing those to work, then your, those grandfathered projects, we'd be subject to litigation. But I think that what I'm suggesting obviously would have to be an advisory question in nature, but I think that it would buy time with the public so that they could see that you, in fact, are working diligently on options, and that you are looking for suggestions, you know, looking for their approval to make this happen. So just food for thought.
Jim Slade. Just a little more history to begin with here. When our initiative was validated by the clerk, the developers sued to keep it off the ballot, and we lost in district court with Judge Gibbons, and we appealed on an emergency basis to the Supreme Court, who ruled in our favor, and it went on the ballot. It passed. We were immediately sued by developers. The county, of course, now is going to side with the voters, right? No, the county sided with the developers, because that was the sentiment of the board at the time, contrary to all common sense and respect for the public. And again, Judge Gibbons ruled against us, saying it was unconstitutional. We again appealed to the Supreme Court. It took them till 2006 to agree, in very large part, with the Sustainable Growth Committee. Only then was the county and the developers willing to sit down and talk to us. There was no litigation after that, even though it may have theoretically existed until 2008. Once we started discussing things after the Supreme Court ruled in our favor, that's when the growth management ordinance came into being, and when Mr. Brady, Ms. Gregory, myself, and others met on a weekly basis. When the ordinance went into effect, no one anticipated the Great Recession, which was caused primarily by the subprime mortgage crisis. Because no one had anticipated it, no limits were placed on the use of excess allocations, even though it had been called for in the master plan. The annual number of building permits has never reached the level set by the ordinance that went into effect in 2007 until this year. Meanwhile, the number of excess allocations grew to more than 2,000 today. That creates the risk of a future building boom that in part the ordinance was designed to avoid. That would lead to another bust, which is an unhealthy and undesirable economic outcome. Given the nearly 7,000 homes currently approved developments, including the Park Ranch's 2,500, 2,218, that boom could come at any time, and seems to have already started. Until this year, the ordinance had had zero effect, but now that is beginning to change. Unpredictable growth rates make it difficult for the county to keep up with expanded needs for roads, water, sewer, and other facilities. The goal is to accommodate new development at a pace which can be adequately served by the available community facilities and services. That is already problematic due to increased population. For example, our judicial and law enforcement center is clearly inadequate and needs to be expanded. Why? Increased population. Highway 395 through the town just gets worse and worse. Many people find it already intolerable. There's been very little progress on the so-called bypass, Mueller Parkway, which only makes matters worse, not better, with the massive growth it will facilitate. The viability of our aquifer continues to be a concern. More wells have gone dry, particularly in Johnson Lane and Ruinstruth. There's been very, this will be an increasing challenge due to climate change, as shown by recent record drought and high temperatures. Here's some quotes from County Code Chapter 20.560. Point 0608, "Changes may be made by the board in the form of an ordinance at any time." Point 030A, "If capacity to provide an essential service or resource is reached, the board may stop residential growth for an interim period of time in all or a portion of the county." Point 030B, "The following essential resources, facilities, and services will be considered for the managed growth of Douglas County, including water resources, law enforcement and judicial facilities, state and local roads and traffic." Point 120B, "Indicates that a moratorium may be declared for any reason that concerns the capacity of an essential facility or resource." While I'm not calling for a moratorium at this point, I do have two common sense suggestions as to how the allocation system might be tweaked to protect our essential facilities and resources, yet maintain the number of allocations and the 2% rate. One, this system to allow 2% annual growth in our population was based on the 2000 census. I believe that when the 20 census is released in coming months, that those numbers should be recalibrated, and that process should be done following every decennial census. That would just make a course correction every 10 years, and not affect the overall numbers. Secondly, the master plan envisioned a limited number of excess allocations to be used in subsequent years. The more than 2,000 excess allocations at this point threaten to disrupt the purpose of the ordinance, to set a steady, sustainable growth rate, so that the county can keep pace with services and infrastructure. In that regard, I would urge that the board limit the nearly 600 excess allocations in the project pool to no more than 50 per year, and likewise to limit the individual pool of more than 1,400 to no more than 100 a year. This would fulfill the letter and intent of the ordinance, would help prevent any sudden boom followed by the inevitable bust, and would give the county a better chance to keep pace with necessary services and infrastructure. And is not too different from what Mr. Gardner and Dan have recommended with 10%, but I prefer to stick to the 50 and 100. So I urge you to seriously consider those suggestions. Using all the nearly 600 excess project allocations in the next four to six years, as staff suggested might happen, would be contrary to the intent of the growth management ordinance, and contrary to the public good. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Slade, thank you. You've answered a lot of my questions in your presentation.
For the record, Jeannie Shizuru. I didn't quite hear David Brady's, because I was traveling in a car listening, but I kind of grasped, this is a very complicated subject. I kind of grasp that you can't change the overall number of units that are supposed to happen under the growth ordinance plan, and you can't change the vested or grandfathered in units, and even the method of kind of allocating and spreading out the ones for developers over 25 years, that seems like a reasonable plan. But the suggestions that have come out from the various people is that wherever there is left, the ability to reduce the number of building permits that can be allocated in any given year, slowing it down, stopping the banking and borrowing, because that was in the ordinance, it seems like that's what everybody is trying to get to, is where there is the ability to change the allocations, the commissioner should go full speed ahead. It's taken the citizens 25 years to get a board that is not majority pro-developer, and I know everybody on the board is aware of that. It's a generational thing, 25 years. So whatever you can do, do it speedily right now, because money pours in all the time to counter your efforts. Thank you.
Michael Avalor for the record. Nice to see the commissioners. I've been listening to this, and I've been listening to development stuff for, God, the last five years of my life. There's always seems to be talk about development, and I haven't said a lot in a long time, just because I've been, there hasn't been a lot of relevant information, but this has been a great conversation. There's been a lot of creative solutions presented. I just hope that the county commission can keep in mind that I understand that there's this specter of development, that we're this county that's exploding, and there's properties jumping up everywhere like weeds, but I just don't feel like that's actually what's occurring. And the numbers kind of, when I saw the numbers of what was being allocated and what was available, that kind of seemed like an odd reality that I was now seeing. So I just, I hope that you guys can keep in mind that while we should definitely be keeping track of this, there's also a huge problem out there of properties for people who are not, who didn't come here with wealth from other states, or who haven't had the opportunity to develop their own wealth internally. There's people of my generation, there was a reference to generation, which is a great point, there's a generation that lives here that's being completely ignored. It's the younger generation that's trying to buy their first homes, all these things, I've said it once before, following the American dream. It sure doesn't feel like you can get that in Douglas County as a young person. You have to make an exorbitant amount of money in a market that's pretty saturated and doesn't pay decent wages, and then you have this ever-increasing cost. I pay $700 for my rent. I haven't seen a number that low in seven, eight years. I don't know how I fell under the radar, and hopefully this doesn't bite me. But at the end of the day, there are people out there with families, I'm a single person, I can afford that. There are people out there trying to raise families in this community, the true lifeblood of this community, the people who are active in this community, who, and I have total respect for retirees, that's great. I'm going to be there soon, and I hope that I have a beautiful community to live in as well. That's why I respect the whole thinking into the future, making sure that the aquifer, I've learned a lot. But I just hope you guys can maintain, and I hope that the community and this commission can have the lively, creative solutions that we all seem to put into steaming development, to maybe building development that will actually help the younger generations actually live in this beautiful community that everybody seems so desperate to protect. Just because I don't have a lot of money, or I'm young, doesn't mean I shouldn't have the ability to develop a life here. And it seems like there's so much focus, and there's so many people coming out hard, that this evil, the developers and everybody, you know, 20 generations, there's 25 years ago, and everybody was pro-development. Well, I get it, things change. But let's try and also do things that help the other communities, the people who are going to be here, for, or I would hope that they would, but then again, most people in my generation have left, because they simply can't afford it, and there's nowhere to work.
Thank you, Mr. Avalor. Any further comments? Mr. Delair?
Thank you. Chairman Ingles, it's Tom Delair for the record. Some things I've heard during this item, and I just want to clarify on the record here, the 2560, 150 is a banking and borrowing section, and the banking and borrowing section is separate from the pool, and the pool that we're drawing from. I just want to make sure that that is clear to everybody. And then, in order to enact banking and borrowing, if you look at 150A, banking and borrowing may only be allowed as part of a development agreement between the applicant and the county. And we were talking during the break with DA Gregory, and she had mentioned that there was one project that was close. We don't have a project today under a development agreement that has instituted this bank- We don't have a project today under a development agreement that has instituted this banking and borrowing. And the banking and borrowing would use allocations for their development over whatever the development agreement says, and they would use those from future years in order for that development to develop over that time period. And that's why it is needed or required in an actual development agreement that you guys would end up working out with the developer. So I just want to try and clarify that discrepancy there.
Mr. Cates?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Patrick Cates for the record. I just want to talk a little bit about where we go from here. Obviously, this is just our sort of initial look at the Growth Management Ordinance. This is an action item, although we're not really expecting you to have real specific direction on what to change in the ordinance at this period of time. The direction that we're hoping to receive is maybe certain aspects that you want us to look at. I think it would be very prudent to do some public outreach and hold a workshop and get some of that input before we bring it back to this board. And I think once the Board has some clear direction on where we want to go with the ordinance, we'll also need to go to the Planning Commission as well. So that's the path forward that I see.
Any further comment from the chambers, from the commissioners? Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chair. I don't know that a motion is really necessary today on this. I appreciate the report, but, you know, sometimes we're just not going to have a motion that's necessary on an item that, even though it says for possible action, so anyways, I think we could avoid doing that.
How about for further discussion? Just make a motion in that regard. Just make a motion for further discussion.
I... Yes, I would. Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion that we bring this back to the Board at a later date for possible adjustments to the Growth Management Ordinance.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Noasad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Okay, item number three, for possible action, discussion to adopt Douglas County Gifts and Minor Donations.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby for the record. Before we start in, there's five separate policies, and I wanted to kind of give a background on why we're doing each one. And so with that, I'll start with my presentation. Why we're updating the policies? There was a risk assessment that was performed by our internal auditors in 2019. It identified policies, procedures, and processes as a high-risk level area with a major impact. And the statement from that risk assessment is that a policy established what should be done, and procedures affect the policy. So that is the background for all the work that we've done to date. Internal control assessment in September 2019 included recommendations for a cash handling policy, a purchasing policy, which we did bring to you in November of 2020, and a grants policy, which was updated and approved by the Board in 2019. The grand jury report of 2019-2020 included recommendations for an inventory policy and receivables policy. Financial audits from our auditors. The payment card industry compliance has been a recurring audit finding since 2014, and this is the first step today to resolving that audit finding. It also includes audit findings in fiscal year 2019 and 2020 regarding the outdated purchasing policy. Again, you've already heard that updated policy. And we had internal audit program recommendations for cash handling. That was from the 2019-20 internal audit program. And internal... Inventory and accounts receivable were recommendations from the fiscal year 2021 internal audit So the first policy that you're going to hear today is the donations policy. Okay. I just won't look at that. There we go. Okay. And this was a issue we found through the county is that various departments take donations. I have no idea in finance what the restrictions are. No, I don't... I'm done. Sorry. It's okay. No, I'm done with them. And I... We don't know if there are certain restrictions on the funds and how they should be spent. So this policy establishes the finance department as a central repository for all the donations. We'll be collecting information on the donations, so we can track the donations, restrict those funds, and make sure they're being spent as the donors intended. Also, there's public records requirements on these, that they're... The records are required to be retained for a certain number of years. So with this policy and finance taking control of that, we will be able to make sure that those records are retained appropriately. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And this policy was approved by the Audit Committee on Monday, unanimous by unanimous vote.
This is to track incoming donations or outgoing donations? With the auditors and with your background, you probably have an idea of how to do this and how you'd like to set the program up?
Terry Willoughby for the record, yes. Other counties have similar programs. This is a similar policy that another county had provided as a sample.
Any further questions?
I have no question. I do have a comment. Having looked at the information you presented to us, it looks to me like you've pretty well gotten this button down. So I don't see where, other than smiling, nodding, and approving what you have done, there's not a whole lot for us to do here.
Ms. Willoughby, I do have a question that's a little off-subject. The grand jury reviews the county every five years, roughly. Are we due for a grand jury review?
Terry Willoughby for the record, the last one was in 2019-20, so we are not due for another... That was a follow-up on the initial tire gate, so I don't believe we are due for another review at this time.
Thank you. Any public comment? No seen, no public comment. Bring it back to the Board. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Douglas County Gifts and Minor Donation Policy as recommended by the Douglas County Audit Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. For possible action, discussion to adopt proposed Douglas County Receivables Policy. Ms. Willoughby.
Terry Willoughby for the record. Again, this policy came out of our internal audit program from fiscal year 2021, and also our observation in working on our financial audit is that there are many departments through the county that are doing billing and receivables, and the only time we see those revenues is when people pay. So I don't have a clear handle on what is outstanding at any time or what receivables the county has. So the recommendation has been to centralize that, so we have a true financial picture in our financial system and work with all of these shadow... These departments that are doing the billing to get that information into our enterprise system, and this is the first step.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, in getting asked that question about, do you have these things in place or not? If we approve this, are you able to do... Accomplish the job?
Terry Willoughby for the record. So this would be the first step. So... And then we have to work with the departments to actually make sure we get the information on a regular basis and put this into practice. So it would be a training opportunity, once the policy's in place, to work towards completion.
Thank you.
Ms. Willoughby, I understand like water, sewage, and taxes, and things like that. Can you give a couple of examples of what type of receivables we're talking about here?
Terry Willoughby for the record, yes. So the airport has... Is an example. They have many leases and tenants, and they maintain that system outside our... They maintain that billing outside our financial system. The sheriff, for example, would take issues liquor licenses and various other licenses, and that's all maintained outside our financial system. Community services, for example, weed control. They do quite a bit of billing to citizens for weed control. That's all done outside our financial system. The only thing I see is when people are paying and we get the cash.
Thank you. Any public comment, questions? Bring it back to the Board for a vote.
I have a question, sir.
Yep. Commissioner Noasad.
Now, the entities you described, the sheriff's office, the airport, and so on, they do receive money from their clients. Are they maintaining their own system in there and putting that money in the bank, or is it coming back to the county?
The money goes into the treasurers, into our county treasury, into our accounts, but it's a totally separate system than our financial system.
Thank you.
Any further questions? This is an action item. Do we hear a vote? Excuse me, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve the adoption of the proposed Douglas County Accounts Receivable Policy as confirmed by the Audit Committee.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Noasad, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. Item number five, discussion to adopt the Douglas County Inventory Process Policies. Ms. Willoughby.
Terry Willoughby for the record. This is a very important policy for the county. As you know, we had issues with Tiregate and inventory controls, and we've been working towards improving those inventory controls. And as it turns out, there's other inventory in the county other than tires. So this policy addresses all of the county's inventory, and this was due to recommendations from previous grand juries, as well as our internal auditors. This was a result of an inventory process review by Moss Adams during fiscal year 2021. I believe you heard that report in March. So with that, we've worked with departments. I wanted to thank all the department heads who've really provided input for this, as well as Moss Adams staff and the county manager for direction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Gardner?
Ms. Willoughby, the... For instance, for the... And I'm just going to use that as an example, the Roads Division that was responsible for the tires. Is that inventory... Is this inventory going to be done by a person within that department or outside of that department?
Terry Willoughby for the record. Departments are responsible for maintaining their inventory throughout the year. However, finance staff, with the assistance of some temporary employees, we just completed two days of a very comprehensive inventory across the county, across various departments. So we go in and do an independent count.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Douglas County Inventory Process Policy as presented by our CFO. Thank you.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Gardner, a second by Commissioner Noasad. All those in favor signify by voting aye.
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 Any nays? The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Willoughby.
And Mr. Chair, just for purposes of the record, we didn't have any public present for public comment.
I was aware of that. That's why I didn't ask for public... Except for Mr. Turner, and he didn't... He didn't seem to be... Moving on, item number six, for possible action. Review and approve the Douglas County Handling Policies 300.24 as part of the Douglas County Administrative Policies and Procedures. Ms. Bergens, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Ingles and Commissioners. Amy Bergens, Clerk Treasurer for the record. The purpose of this policy is to provide general guidance to all county departments that have cash collection sites to include special events. The policy will assist county departments in ensuring that effective internal controls and adequate safeguards are in place to protect cash, to include cash handling and management and oversight. The objective of the cash handling policies and procedures is to ensure that all cash is properly accounted for and deposited in the county's treasurer's department in accordance with Douglas County Code 3.03.040. This policy was reviewed by the Douglas County Audit Committee on Monday and was 5 to 0 approved to come before you. It has also been reviewed by Moss Adams. So attached to your agenda packet is the policy for your review, Title III of the County Code, and Moss Adams Internal Control Review.
Are there any questions from the Board?
So... I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So, Ms. Bergens, I'm looking at this one line here, kind of coin and currency, cash of $20 or more should be inspected and verified with counterfeit detection pins. So when we have entities such as the people out at Candy Dance, or the airport when they do their air show, is that something they're going to provide, or is that something we're going to provide to go through... To do that?
So if you look a little bit further, one of the big things that was brought up during the Audit Committee prior to this last meeting, bringing this forward, when we were talking about even coming up with a cash handling policy and procedure, one of the main topics that the Audit Committee brought up was how important it is for us to have a cash handling policy for those special events, where there's just a lot of cash going through volunteers, and there's not a lot of controls. So in the policy and procedure, let me find it. It's towards the end. It's Section 8, Cash Handling for Special Events. It does have its own section just to oversee Candy Dance, the air show, and stuff like that. In that part of the policy, even though those special events are going to fall under our county policy, it states in there that each special event, whether it's the town of Genoa or the airport, will have their own policy and procedure that the special event also has to follow. We're going to work with those departments to come up with those and create those to come up with those and create those cash handling because each event is going to have its own unique issues that they're going to need to write into their policy and procedure. So as far as training them, we are going to be a part of all of that. However, it really does fall on the departments themselves.
Any further questions or comments? Any comments from the audience? Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Douglas County Cash Handling Policy 300.24 as part of the Douglas County Administrative Policies and Procedures.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Noasad, a second by Commissioner Rice. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Bergens. Number seven, for possible action. Discussion to approve the proposed Douglas County Payment Card Industry. PCI. I don't know what that is. Compliance Policy. Oh, Dan Johnson, the Marine. Nope, she, he's not here.
Terry Willoughby for the record, I'm covering for Daniel. He's on vacation today. So I've been heavily involved in this anyway, so I pushed him to get this done. Payment Card Industry Standards were established in 2006. We are required to have them for, to protect cardholder data for anyone that takes credit cards. We have had an audit finding on our financial audit since 2014 that has remained each year and remained throughout last year. And this policy is the first step in resolving that audit finding and documenting our compliance with Payment Card Industry Standards.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Willoughby, do we have secure IT for the physical use of the cards?
Terry Willoughby for the record, that's going to be part of this project is going out and working with the departments to make sure we have secure connections. The first step is a policy. The next step, of course, in the implementation is implementing and making sure we have secure payment card stations.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the board? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Douglas County BCI compliance policy as presented.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice, a second by Commissioner Gardner. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. For possible action, discussion to approve the appointment of an alternate member to the South Lake Tahoe Basin Waste Management Authority Board to, in accordance with the Joint Power Authority Agreement. Mr. Ricker, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Phil Ricker, Director of Public Works for the Record. In a recent audit of, of the South Lake Tahoe Basin Waste Management Authority, it was, there was a review of the, of the ordinance and policy that, that formed the Joint Powers Authority. And in that, each entity that participates in it, City of South Lake Tahoe, Eldorado County, and Douglas County are required annually to seat a member of their board, of each of their respective boards, to that, to the Joint Powers Authority, which you have been in compliance with every year. Wes Rice is your current, is currently on that board. But in that origination document, it also required the appointment of an alternate. And that has been, was discovered during the audit that the agencies were not doing that. So what's before you today is simply a compliance with the, with that agreement, and that is to have an alternate for that position. Wes, I know, is, has never missed a meeting, so I don't think it's going to be a heavy lift for anyone, but it's, it's required.
I think the question is, who wants to learn more about solid waste than you ever wanted to?
Are there any questions?
Well, those volunteers just jumped up there, didn't they?
They're beating down the doors.
I'd recommend someone who wears boots.
Actually, the, it's, it's an interesting board to sit on. True, you do learn more about solid waste than you ever wanted to in bare boxes more. I didn't know that there are bare boxes that are legal and bare boxes that they won't open and take the trash out of. So there's all sorts of fun parts to this job. And the meeting place is the airport at South Lake Tahoe. So it's centrally located in the far south, southwest corner of the basin. So.
Since you're out that way.
Hey, listen, I'm at every meeting, so.
Is, is this going to appoint the alternate now, or you're just saying that we're going to appoint one?
Yes, this is, the, the action that is being recommended today is for the, for this board to select an alternate to be named for, named to the JPA.
Did you have a name to submit?
I, I do not. I mean, Wes, I think in the, normally on the, normally in January of each year, the beginning, the very first meeting of, of each calendar year is when you make these appointments to the various boards. And it was an oversight in January to not have appointed an alternate at that time. You, your primary member is Wes Rice on that board. We're looking for an alternate.
Is this alternate supposed to be a county commissioner?
I couldn't hear his question.
Commissioner Tarkanian, could you repeat the question?
I was just asking if you were saying the alternate is to be a county commission member?
Yeah.
Or somebody from the public?
No, by the, by the formation document for the Joint Powers Authority, all members have to be, the alternates and the, and the primary have to be from the governing bodies. It has to be from this commission.
All right. If nobody else wants to do it, I'll do it.
I nominate Commissioner Danny Tarkanian.
You know, it always seems.
This may be the first motion you made that I'm going to second and agree with.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, is there any further questions or comments from the board?
Well, in almost every, yes, Mr. Chair, in almost every organization I've ever belonged to, it always seems that the person out of the room at the time the nominations come up gets appointed. And since Mr. Tarkanian is out of the room, it seems like a perfect opportunity to appoint him to this as the alternative.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner.
Okay, hearing, hearing that enthusiasm, is there any comment from the audience in regard to this matter? Seeing none, do we hear a motion?
Okay. I'll move that Mr. Danny Tarkanian, Commissioner Tarkanian be appointed as the alternative to the South Lake Tahoe Basin Waste Management Authority Board in concurrence or accordance with the Joint Powers Authority Agreement.
I gleefully second.
Commissioner Tarkanian, I don't know what you get yourself into. Do I hear a motion?
We did.
We got, had a motion. We got a motion and a second. Okay. Commissioner Gardner made the motion, Commissioner Rice seconded the motion. Do I hear a vote? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations.
I might add that I'm looking forward to Mr. Tarkanian's very first report to this board on how it went up there.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number nine, for possible action. Thank you, Mr. Ricker.
Mr. Chair, could we, perhaps we could take a break now?
Okay. It's 4:36. Be back by 4:45.
Recording in progress.
Okay, can we bring the meeting back to order? This will be item number nine for possible action. Discussion and evaluation of the performance of the county manager, Mr. Patrick Cates, based on the, based on the priorities set by the Board of, the last Board in June, and the granting of the merit increase between zero and three percent in accordance with the contract between Douglas County and Mr. Cates. Wendy Lang, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the Commission, Wendy Lang from Human Resources for the record. I'm here today just to give you a little bit of framework regarding this item. You have an opportunity as the Board about once a year to formally evaluate the county manager in accordance with the agreement with the county manager and county policy. In this process, a merit pay increase may be awarded consistent with amounts that are allowed for other exempt management employees in the county, and that's currently up to three percent. Last year, going into economic uncertainty, Mr. Cates requested not to receive a merit increase, and therefore he did not receive a merit increase, um, last year or yet, as we are just now evaluating his second year, or you will be evaluating his second year as county manager. Today, Mr. Cates is here to discuss the last year, so I'll just wrap up with, he has been noticed that his character may be discussed in a public meeting in accordance with NRS two forty-one, and in the packet you have the entirety of his contract with the county, the policy that I referenced regarding merits, and other information for reference, and I'm available if you have any questions, but with that I'll hand it over to Mr. Cates to discuss the activities that he's been engaged in and his performance, thank you.
If I may proceed, Mr. Chairman? Okay, let me pull up a PowerPoint presentation. Share this on Zoom. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, just a little, little background in terms of the terms of the contract, um, there's really three aspects here that are relevant to this discussion. Uh, the first item is that the county with input from the employee, that would be me, agrees to adopt priorities, goals, and expectations for the employee each year. Uh, so that is prospective, looking forward. Today, we're going to talk about the priorities that were set last year. Um, and the employee's evaluation shall be based on the priorities, goals, and expectations developed as provided above, so that's retrospective, so those were what were set last year. You do have in your packet a report that I gave to the Board last June, my last evaluation, um, and that constitutes the, um, the direction, priority goals that were established at that time. The next item, a workshop to develop specific criteria for priorities and expectations to serve as a basis for the employee's annual evaluation must be held within two months of the date of the employee's evaluation, so that's looking forward. Um, so I will talk a little bit about, uh, forward priorities and ongoing priorities, um, but we need to, um, come back to a, a future meeting to establish those priorities for the current period going forward, if that makes sense. So, the annual report I mentioned, that was produced on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty, the basis for the last evaluation and goal setting. Um, the evaluation was delayed due to COVID, it was supposed to have occurred in March, um, but that was delayed, which I think is, you know, now I think we're in line with that because it was June last year, so I think that works. The topics that were covered in that were the accomplishments through May of two thousand twenty, uh, goals through December of two thousand twenty, and long-term goals from January two thousand twenty-one and beyond. And my presentation will be going through that, um, and what we've been able to achieve. Uh, and the one thing that I, I want to say is, um, these are all achievements that we have done. I could not have done any of these without all of the hard work of the county staff and my management team, and I'm very, uh, thankful and beholden to them for making these accomplishments possible. Uh, first item was training, uh, develop or training and orientation for new commissioners. Uh, we did achieve that goal, for the new commissioners that came in, you got to participate in that. Um, expanded risk management training for employees through PoolPact. Um, that's changed a little bit, um, as you know, we've moved away from PoolPact, um, so this goal is no longer valid. Um, we were using them up until, uh, we terminated that. Um, we're looking for solutions, uh, with our new insurance carrier, um, or NeoGov Learn. We did expand NeoGov Learn a lot in the last year and made more training available for staff, and, um, and we're going to house, um, custom training for staff in that module as well going forward. Um, expand ethics trainings beyond basics to include annual department-level conversations. Uh, that goal was achieved and is ongoing, so what that means is, uh, every employee is required to take the ethics training, commissioners have had that ethics training, but it's very high level, it oriented to the laws. Uh, what we're trying to do is take that to the next level with department heads and out, and with their employees, so the department heads are sitting down with their employees, talking in practical terms what ethics means in their jobs in specific scenarios. I think that's very important, it's how you change a culture of an organization, uh, so we've spent, uh, time doing that, and that's an ongoing work in progress. Uh, develop budget monitoring training for directors and managers. Uh, that goal has also been achieved, Terry Willoughby has been, uh, giving, uh, more and more trainings, including on budget monitoring, uh, for directors and managers and anybody that manages budgets. Uh, that's still an ongoing, uh, task, as we try to find, uh, better tools to do that, but we at least have some basic training in place, which there was none, uh, when I started. Finance, uh, continued close monitoring revenue for further budget adjustments in response to COVID nineteen-induced recession. Uh, that goal is achieved, at the time of my evaluation, we're facing a lot of fiscal uncertainty, we're expecting to have to tighten our belts, we made budget reductions. Uh, it turned out our revenues, uh, did not decline nearly as much as we thought, in fact, some of them were higher than we thought. Um, so that was achieved, but it turned out not to be that consequential, consequential of an issue. Uh, continued update to financial policies and procedures, uh, partially achieved, ongoing. Uh, you just approved, uh, several policies and procedures today, and I was just discussing with CFO Terry Willoughby about what's left on the list, and, um, we may actually have them all, we gotta go back and review that and see if there's anything else that we need to bring forward. Although I would say, as she, uh, pointed out in her discussions, putting the policies and procedures in place is really, uh, these are countywide, is really the first step. Then we have to train people, we have to make sure there's specific procedures for each of those, um, departments, that is an ongoing effort, and then of course, when you put a new policy and procedure in place, you find things that need to be tweaked, need to be clarified, need to be changed, um, so that's definitely going to be an ongoing effort. Um, continued implementation of audit findings, um, some of those are the policy and procedures, we've made a lot of progress on that, uh, we do still have some audit findings that are still in progress that we have to achieve. Just to give you an example of that, one of the audits was about our data center being in the basement of this building, uh, not best practices at all. Uh, the Commission has approved funding for us to move that data center, uh, and that, uh, project is in progress. Uh, we will be moving it to the Minden Public Works, uh, building, uh, on their second floor, it's a secure facility, um, and it will co-exist with, uh, Minden's, um, uh, server room. Uh, so we're not quite done with that yet, um, but it's, uh, it's ongoing. Master plan text update, um, that was achieved, uh, at the end of last calendar year. Uh, another goal, uh, complete sewer rate restructure, we have not completed this, um, uh, we just didn't get to it, um, but we are planning on bringing that forward in this current fiscal year. Uh, you may recall that, um, the water rates were done, uh, two years ago, I believe it was, and, um, as part of that study, they also looked at the sewer rate structure. Uh, there is a desire not to have two different rate changes on the rate pairs all at once, um, but we'll, we will definitely be bringing that forward in the, in the next year. Uh, initiate Cars, Carson Valley Aquifer Study with USGS, um, we finally did achieve that goal. It was a little later than I wanted to, that was largely due to the financial uncertainty, we had, we had not included those in our last budget and wanted to make sure it was something we could move forward with, but the Board did approve that, and that is in progress. Uh, grand jury report with the Audit Committee and the Board of County Commissioners, uh, that goal was achieved, the last grand jury report, uh, went to the Audit Committee, um, and if I recollect, we didn't bring it to the Board for a full meeting, uh, and the conversations that I had with the Chair and Vice Chair, there really wasn't a desire to, because there really wasn't anything of substance in there in terms of, uh, tire gate, um, there were some recommendations in it, um, but that, that never came back formally to the Board, but the Audit Committee did, did review that. Uh, long, long-term goals, which had been this last January and going forward. Uh, strategic plan with the new Board of County Commissioners, um, not completed, we have not gotten to any strategic planning, um, that's something that, uh, we're working on. Uh, a piece of the, um, uh, uh, strategic plan is the Economic Vitality Plan. Uh, we're just starting that process, we have a consultant that's on board, the consultants should be reaching out to each of you, um, to talk about priorities for that plan. Um, there were several projects in the old plan that have been achieved, and, um, we need to think about new projects and things that we want in there. I know, I, I'm interested in having some goals in there related to the airport, um, and we've talked about the possibility of, uh, there, there's the project that's currently in the works for the Stagecoach in Genoa, that would be appropriate to put in this plan, although I know that's moving forward, I'm actually hoping that will be done before this plan is even updated, but if not, uh, I would like to see that placed in the plan. Um, financial processes, uh, New World Systems Reconfiguration for Optimal Efficiency and Paperless Processing, uh, that's definitely, um, still in progress. Uh, one of the steps was to, uh, bring New World Systems out of our server rooms and put it in a hosted environment with the vendor, um, that gives us more flexibility to make changes. Uh, we have done some process improvements, we have some project money set aside to continue to do that in the next, uh, fiscal year, so that's a, that's an ongoing effort. Um, expand management training program to include process improvement capstone projects. Um, I'm a big advocate of process improvements, I had, um, uh, an idea that as part of our management training program, which is a very formal, very high-quality program, that we would add a unit in there for process improvement, so if you were from a particular department, you went through that training, uh, part of the curriculum would be for you to develop a process improvement project and implement it in your program. We have not set that up yet, it's just something we quite haven't gotten to. Uh, we did make some changes to the program though, we did expand the training to include, um, some modules on public finance and what I call the rule of law. That was something that was very important to me personally, and when I talk about the rule of law, what I mean is, every public official and public employee derives their power from some law, some regulation, some policy, and it's very important when public officials, um, are making decisions that affect the public or, uh, any decisions whatsoever in their official capacity, they need to know where their authority comes from and what it is. Uh, all too often, people come into programs and they just try to do what they think is best, and that's a good instinct, but you also need to make sure you really understand the legal framework you work in, and what I tell all my managers is you can't just rely on your deputy district attorney to tell you that, you need to know those laws yourself, and you need to know the authority under which you're acting. Uh, but we will get back to the capstone project, that is something I do still want to see implemented, and we'll work on that in the next year. Um, expand process improvement initiatives throughout county departments, um, that's in progress, is partially implemented, and we've done a lot of work in community development, this Board, um, approved a reorganization of community development, that was very important to me. Uh, Jennifer Davidson did a tremendous amount of work on that. Um, we are still, uh, doing some system changes, you recently approved a, a new archive, uh, system for them, um, so that they can go to more paperless processes, and so there's some project funding, and some things are still in work that I expect to see completed in the next year. Uh, we have not gotten to a lot of other departments. Um, I do want to, as soon as things settle down with, uh, Vacation Home Rentals, put some resources, uh, starting to look at Public Works, and we have some ideas for reorganizing Public Works, uh, and eventually, if we can get people trained in how to do this, um, I, I want to see all departments just continually looking at how they, how they're doing things, process improvement projects, finding ways to be more efficient, better, faster, cheaper. Uh, more long-term goals, uh, assess IT infrastructure and develop a modernization roadmap and funding model for digital government services. Um, this is in progress, um, we're not quite as far along as I wanted to be. I don't want to use COVID as an excuse, but COVID had a tremendous impact on our workload and what we could focus on in the last year. Um, we have done some work, uh, we've done the, the PC replacements, we use CARES Act funds to upgrade a lot of our PCs. I talked about the data center project that is underway, uh, I talked about New World Systems being hosted in the cloud, I believe that's just about to launch. The, the, uh, program staff have been doing final reviews, and we're just about to flip that over and move it to the vendor. Um, and then Office three sixty-five was, uh, approved by the Board for the current budget. I believe that's coming forward for that contract at the next meeting, uh, to get that underway. That's going to be a key tool, um, for modernization of our IT infrastructure. Um, but we need to develop a formal plan and, uh, a, a formal funding model for IT that, uh, makes that sustainable into the future, so that's something that, um, I want to work on as we look at, not the budget that just started today, but the one that we'll set up for the following fiscal year. Uh, revised Douglas County Code Title Twenty, consistent with the master plan to provide a clear and defensible framework for responsible, sustainable growth in our community. So we spent a tremendous amount of time last year working on the master plan, we've got that under our belts, uh, now we're tackling Title Twenty. Uh, we've already done the Vacation Home Rentals, which is part of Title Twenty, that was years in the making, and I am hoping that we don't take years on the other titles, or sections of Title Twenty, and of course, today, we just started a discussion about the Growth Management Ordinance, so we'll keep working through that, and I definitely want to work with the Board to identify the priority areas of Title Twenty that we can, that we can tackle within the next year. Uh, work with other local utilities on water management and expansion of the regional water system to ensure sustainability of water use within the county. Uh, this needs more progress, uh, we started the USGS Water Stud, Study, like I said, that came later than I wanted to, um, that's, that's some heavy work that I want to see done in the next year. Um, you know, we've been having preliminary, preliminary conversations with the GIDs, uh, they provided a lot of input to the USGS Study, um, but we really need to have some forums and workshops and set some goals, and I, and I will just remind you, I can't remember the bill, but there is a requirement under law that we have a regional water plan developed, we still have several years to do that, but water is so important to this community that I want to see us do it sooner rather than later. Uh, initiate a septic systems, uh, um, conversion program to address nitrate issues in our aquifer, we know we have problem areas in the county, um, uh, with septic systems, uh, creating high nitrates, uh, Johnson Lane, Rune Stroth are a couple of areas where that is a particular concern. Um, we're kind of in the early planning phase of this, uh, staff, uh, we've been talking about how to approach this. Um, Washoe County, for instance, has a granting program where they assist people with the costs of connecting. Uh, we've had a lot of conversations about how we approach that and, and to be equitable to people. If we give people grants and other people had to connect and they didn't get a grant, how is that fair? Um, that's something I want to work on in the next year and engage with this Board to try to find a solution to that, so we're not just, uh, continuing to, uh, to pump nitrates into the aquifer. That's a big item, I don't know how long that's going to take, but that's something I would at least like to start, um, initiating in the next year, uh, assuming the Board agrees with that priority, of course. Uh, develop a permanent funding model for stormwater program, we've made no progress on this, uh, just for your information. for your information, the stormwater program was created three years ago, I think it was now, with general fund appropriation. They continue to get general funding. We could continue that, but typically, a stormwater program would have some sort of assessment system. Carson City has an assessment system for their stormwater program as well, and that's something that I think the Board should consider in the future. That may be something that we could talk about for the following fiscal year budget that would start a year from now. Refine and Enhance Our Capital Improvement Programs to Meet Long-Term Needs. I would say there was significant progress in the fiscal year 2122 budget approval. I thought we had a very robust capital improvement program that the Board approved. Of course, that's an ongoing effort, but I think we made great strides with the budget that you recently approved. Ensure Adequate Funding for Roads Through Prioritization with RTC and the Board of County Commissioners. Again, same thing. I think we've made great improvements. We didn't even really have a full CIP program in the last fiscal year because of concerns about our finances. So I think the way we have it set right now, we're in good shape, but again, that's a constant work we're going to have to continue to do. Create a Permanent Self-Reinforcing Culture of High Ethics. This is very important to me. I talked about the ethics training. That's only one piece of it. This is an ongoing effort. We have our newsletter. I write a lot of pieces for that. I talk about ethics and being good stewards of the public trust. We have discussion sessions in our leadership meetings and the management training that I discussed. And we've really been holding employees accountable, and I'm not always at liberty to go into specific detail. Personnel matters are tending to be confidential, but I can tell you, we've been holding employees accountable, not only for their performance, but any wrongdoing, if there's a need for discipline, we don't sweep it under the rug. We address it. And we are actively engaged with the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline. We get a fair amount of reports to that hotline. I would say the vast majority of them kind of boil down to disputes between employees or sometimes a misunderstanding from the public, but we take everyone seriously. We have Moss Adams look at it, and if it even looks like there's anything that needs to be investigated, we do that. I have initiated and authorized several investigations during my tenure to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So I think that Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline is serving its intended purpose. It was set up before I got here, but I think it's very important. If it wasn't set up, I would have asked the Board to have it set up because we had similar things at the state that I oversaw. I think they're very effective tools to make sure that we have a culture of high ethics. Create a Permanent Self-Reinforcing Culture of Creative Problem-Solving and Continuous Process Improvement. I talked about that already. We do have some progress in the budget to do some improvement things. I talked about Office 365. That one's probably a little redundant from what I already mentioned. This one also is very important to me. Demonstrate to the public the value proposition of their local government. Tell our story through proactive communications program. You know, all too often, governments, local governments are in a reactive mode and are responding to something that went wrong, and they're trying to figure out how to correct it, how to do damage control. I want to make sure that we are communicating well with the public, that they understand the value of what we do and how we use their money. We've made some progress. I think there's definitely more that we can and should do. We have a communication strategy. We're working on an internal communication strategy to make sure we're doing everything we can also for our employees, but we do have the popular annual financial statement that Terri Willoughby has produced, as well as the quarterly financial reports. I believe she's recently reported one of those to you. In the last fiscal year, the Board approved upgrading a communications intern to a full-time position to increase support for the sheriff. And in this last budget, you also approved some additional funding for our communications program, as well as creating a new intern position. It's those kind of resources that really help us message to the public. And if I could just give you some examples, I mean, the Commissioners, I know you get our press releases. We do a lot for the sheriffs and very happy to support the sheriffs so that they don't have to dedicate resources to that, but Melissa Blosser and her team are constantly pumping out information from the sheriff's office, not just about crimes, but about the good work they're doing in the community. And we've done some of that for some of the other departments as well, but in the coming fiscal year, with bringing an intern on, I'm hoping we can do some, I call them, human stories about, you know, here's the stormwater program, and here's the people that do it, and here's the work they do. I think that's very important communication to the public so they feel that their taxpayer dollars are being well-spended and they know what we're doing for them. It's very important. Other accomplishments that weren't identified in that report. COVID-19 emergency response. We've all lived that. I know it took a lot of my personal time and that of my team. Administration of CARES Act funds. We're finally closing those final reports out for the CARES Act funds. Worked with state, regional, and local stakeholders on the COVID response. I personally have been, I don't know if it's thousands of hours, but hundreds of hours of emergency management meetings and Carson City Health and Human Services and trying to keep all that going and trying to message that stuff to the public. And we developed the County Reopening Plan. And then the 2021 Nevada Legislature. We work with our stakeholders to represent the county. I personally worked a lot on this. The attempt to mandate a VHR program from the state, I personally did a lot of work on that, as well as trying to minimize the state budget cuts to China Springs. A lot of people did a lot of work. I mean, everybody in the county provided a lot of information to the walkers, but those were two issues that I personally spent a lot of time on. And I'll be honest, some people think this is odd of me, but I actually really enjoy the legislative process. I've been doing it for nine sessions now. At the state, we didn't have the luxury of hiring lobbyists, so I had to do most of that myself. And as I progressed further in the state, I had to do more and more of that until I was carrying legislation for the governor. And as you have seen in this session, the state legislature takes an active interest in local government and can do all manners of things to make our lives harder or better. This last session, it seemed like it was all harder. So that's very important to spend time doing that. The Vacation Home Rental Program, I already mentioned that. Glad to see that is behind us, although it's not really behind us. Putting the regulations in place are done, but now we're trying to roll it out, and the questions are still coming, and it's going to take a while to cycle through and get it on a stable course. It's going to take a while to get people, you know, as they renew their permits and we make sure they're compliant. So we still have a lot of work behind the scenes to do there, but I'm at least thankful that we got the regulations in place. And just leadership. I think I've developed a cohesive leadership team. I've had minimal turnover on that leadership team. I encourage training. I set high expectations for professional and ethical conduct. This is by no means a complete list, and as I said, this is something we need to come back to a future meeting and talk about, but these are just some of the preliminary goals that I see for the next year. Continue priorities as outlined under the long-term goals that I just went through. Administer the American Recovery Plan Act funds. We've talked about that. I know that's going to take a lot of time and effort in the next year. We need to reevaluate the vacation home rental program in six months. And we need to purchase property and design the new judicial building. You allocated some funding for that. I want to see that done as quickly as possible, as well as design for the remodel of JLEC for the sheriffs. The preliminary design work is already in progress, and you know, we're currently looking around for property. Now that's July 1, I've got money in my pocket, and we want to proceed with that as quickly as we can. Title 20 update. I already talked about that. We need to work with, I need to work with the Board on priorities and areas of concern. Develop a Plan to Comply with the New State Laws Regarding Indigent Defense Services. So there was a last-minute bill in the legislature that I think I briefly mentioned in a legislative report about indigent defense services. I'm having an official come to the meeting on the 15th from the State Department of Indigent Defense Services, and they are setting requirements and new regulations about how counties provide indigent defense services. It will mean we have to make some changes. Luckily, they got some appropriations, and the way their regulations are written, they're supposed to cover any increased costs from the counties. And without going too much detail, because you'll get a full presentation on that on the next, at the next Board meeting, they're basically trying to take it out from under the control of the courts. There were some lawsuits that led to this, and it needs to be under the county managers or at least out from underneath the courts, and it means we'll have to set up some systems to comply with those new regulations. I frankly didn't think they would get the funding or get their laws passed because it just didn't look like they had their stuff together, but they did, and now we've got some deadlines to comply with, but we can talk more about that at our next meeting. Develop a Plan to Comply with the New State Law Regarding 48-Hour Pre-Trial Release. That doesn't become effective until next fiscal year, so we have a little time to figure that out. I've been reporting on that bill as well. That is going to increase costs for the judicial system. Work with the District Court in 16 Counties on a Funding Model and Programming Changes for China Spring. So we've had our first stakeholder meeting on China Spring, the Working Group. We have another meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks. We're making some progress. We've committed to having a report within a year back to the legislature, making recommendations for the camp. The programming changes, that's already in the works. I've been working with Wendy Garrison. She's brought in some consultants. She's talking to the JPOs. I feel like we're in a good place there. We're still struggling with the funding model a little bit, but we're going to find a solution to that. My intent is that we come back to the legislature and propose changes to that funding model to make it more sustainable going forward. But there's definitely going to be a lot of work put into that in the next year. And develop a Working Group with Water Pervaders on Long-Term Water Plans for Douglas County. I already mentioned that. Review and Update the County Strategic Plan. I already made some mention of that. And develop and execute that internal communications plan, which I also mentioned. So those are the highlights. So the next steps would be, of course, absolutely ask any questions you want, but based on the goals established with last year's evaluation, to score me on my overall performance between zero and three, and that we need to schedule a Board workshop within two months to establish priorities and expectations for the current year. That's what the contract says. I don't think we should wait two months. I think we need to come back and talk about this sooner rather than later, so I've got clear direction on where you want me to go in the next year. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Noah said.
On goals through December of 2020, you listed master plan text update. You achieved the goals, but yet there's no water plan in that plan. No mention of water in that plan. Conservation, et cetera.
For the record, Patrick Kates, there is not a specific water section in the master plan. Water is mentioned throughout the plan in several different areas, but if that is a desire and the goal of the Board to carve out a section that deals specifically with water, that's something we can set as a goal going forward, for sure.
Any... Oh, okay.
With regard to initiate Carson Valley Aquifer Study with USGS, what's the progress? What do we hear back from them? Do we have three drops left or 20 drops left?
For the record, Patrick Kates, I have to look at their timeline. I don't, I can't remember. I can't remember when they're supposed to bring back reports back.
Can you supply that to the Board, please?
Yes, absolutely.
In one of your steps here, you mentioned process improvement. If I were to go to the Planning Department and say, what's the process? Show me the process in writing for what we go through in order to issue a permit. Does that exist?
For the record, Patrick Kates, I would have to defer to Tom Delaire if there's a specific written procedure for that today, but what we're trying to do is put the tools in so it's paperless, and then, once we put the tools in place, we'll document them with procedures. So that's kind of in progress.
Okay, so you think that's one of the policies you would like to carry out?
Absolutely, yes.
Is there any further comments or questions from the Board?
Yes, I have a couple more.
Commissioner Noah said.
Okay. Initiate a Septic Systems Conversion Program to Address the Nitrate Issues in Our Aquifer. This has been a problem since I got here in 2001, and yet, there was even a plan to run sewer lines down, let's say, for instance, Johnson Lane and Stephanie Way, and then run a line to the house. I think that died. Am I right?
For the record, Patrick Kates, so there are sewer mains that are run. It depends on the area. There are not sewer mains in every part of Johnson Lane yet, but they have run sewer mains in significant portions of them. For instance, east of Vicki, the streets along there, there is sewer main along there. I can't remember how far it extends east. I live off of Vicki Lane, and I do know that there is some sewer, I believe there's some sewer on my street. But the way it's currently set up, there's no requirement for people to connect unless their septic system fails, and we're going to be waiting a long time to hook up if that's the only criteria. So we need to do two things. We need to extend more of those lines into more of the neighborhoods, and we need to figure out a program to accelerate those connections in a way that doesn't bankrupt households because it can be pretty costly.
Ask to the, we have to wait for the septic system to fail, or, one other thing, where is that outlined? Is that an NRS?
For the record, Patrick Kates, my recollection is that is in NAC, I think it's 444, if I remember.
NAC 444, okay.
Which, by the way, is something we need to bring into county code. So NAC 444 was established by the state when the state NDEP used to oversee septic systems. They no longer do that, and so counties are relying on that NAC, and we don't really have the ability to change it. So if we want to do a new program and have different requirements, we need to bring that language into code so that we can change it. That'd be part of the effort that we need to do.
Ensuring Adequate Funding for Roads Through Prioritization with RTC and VOCC. Couple of meetings ago, I think Commissioner over here asked for a list of the roads that were going to be worked on by the Public Works Department. I don't think we've gotten that yet.
For the record, Patrick Kates, so there's a couple of things. The CIP plan for the roads, we're bringing that to the next meeting, so you'll be able to see all of that. Actually, you have already seen the initial CIP, but we have some updates to it, so we'll be bringing that to you. John Herb did give a presentation on ceiling, the ceiling program that they have for the next year. I checked with him, and as far as scheduled on-the-ground projects like this summer, that's all the work they're going to be doing. There are other projects and works that are in design, but we don't have a major project that's going to be on the ground this summer. But there are stuff in the pipeline that you can see in the CIP, and we're going to re-review that at the next meeting.
Okay, good. You mentioned solving and continuous process improvement. By process, do you mean you will go A, B, C, D, that? That you're talking about?
So basically, what I'm talking about is, if you're familiar with it, it comes from manufacturing, came from Toyota. manufacturing, came from Toyota. It's it's sort of lean. Lean is a process improvement methodology. There are other process improvement methodologies, but that's tried and true. It's been in place for a long time. And if I could characterize it, it it it. One way that you approach it is you get everybody that's involved in a process in a room with a facilitator, and you map out every step that they go through to articulate the process. And you can do it with sticky notes and little pieces of yarn or whatever it is. And you map it all out, and you talk it through. And sometimes you've got written procedures for it, sometimes you don't. But you have to see how is every piece every piece of the process, who's touching it? And then you look at it, and you say, how can we make this leaner? Is there a way we can have less people touch this process? And you start taking things away and take it away until you have an improved process. That to me is what is process improvement.
And I think I have, well, this is a had to do with thinking of vacation home rental, but it taught it big letters. It says process. Are we are? How are we getting feedback on how the new rules are being interpreted or disobeyed or what? Has has anybody does? Let me ask the question then. Is the code enforcement people giving us feedback on on problems they've come across? A bear attacked them or something?
For the record, Patrick Kates, yes, I mean, we we management is getting a lot of feedback from code enforcement. I mean, right now, we're trying to implement the new regulations. So right now, we're spending a lot of time making sure everybody in code enforcement understands the new regulations, spending a lot of time trying to address concerns from the public, VHR owners, about what the process is going to be mean to them. Frankly, right now, since we put out our FAQs last week, the community development code enforcement are a little overwhelmed with people with inquiries about how that's going to work. We're supposed to do a review in six months. We're already keeping a list of things that maybe in six months we need to look at and tweak to make it more workable. But right now, we're a little bit in, I won't say crisis mode, but we're a little overwhelmed with the public outreach and just trying to get it in place. But we're keeping notes as we go.
You're just you're just you're just now landing on the beach.
Yes.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the board?
Yes, sir. I would I would like to make a few comments. Number one, I would like to thank Mr. Kates for the way that he has kept us abreast of the progress of this county. He listens to our concerns and tries to keep an equilibrium about us. This is a very diverse board. We don't agree on some things. We agree on others. And one of the things that I think Patrick keeps in mind is that because we disagree doesn't make us enemies. And that that's one of the things that I I like seeing reinforced, because we are diverse. We represent different areas. I represent Lake Tahoe, even though I'm elected countywide. But the people in Lake Tahoe expect me to represent their interests, as I'm sure those in your area expect you to do the same. And I have worked for many city managers. This is my first county manager that I've I've worked with or for, or that's actually that's worked for me. And my best friend is the city manager. So I, for years, have been aware of the conundrums that can face a manager of a city or a county, and how many of them move around frequently, because one board elects them and loves them, and then two two years later, there's an election, and then the new board don't like them at all. And so I I can understand the the pressure. I can understand the fairness and the unfairness. And I would like to say that I have been delighted with our current county manager. Mr. Kates, I think that you've done an admirable job, especially with some of the negative comments that have been thrown at you, some of which I feel are not only unfair, but I think libelous. And I I wanted to say that I, for one, support you 100%, and I will do everything that I can to make sure that you don't go anywhere. And thank you for your service to this community and to this board.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Gardner?
I I would, I don't know if Mr. Tarkanian was with us. I was going to accede to him right now, but there he is. So I'll let him go, and then I'll and then I'll make some comments.
Sure, I, you know, I've just been on the board six months. I'm getting my feet wet. Patrick and his staff have been very helpful to me in a number of areas. We've had some issues on maybe one other area. I don't think I've had enough experience to be to weigh in completely. As I said, six months in, they've been been very helpful in a number of areas. I'm enjoying listening to what the other commissioners say, and and I'm anxious to hear what Commissioner Gardner, who's been on the board the same length I have, see what his feelings are after six months.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. So as as Mr. Tarkanian has articulated, I I too have only been on the board for six months. So it's hard for me to look at your accomplishments and and have, you know, without the insight of working with you, to to make a determination on that. I will have some comments after public comment, additional comments. I want to I want I'm interested in hearing what the public has to say. I'm more interested in in focusing on your preliminary goals of 2021, 2021, 21, 22. You know, that's I think that's where I'm going to be able to base my judgment in in the future. And so I'm I'm pleased that we were able to get that VHR program behind us, that it's been a huge hurdle, obviously, and we spent an enormous amount of time on it. So and as you know, it's no secret that the purchase of property and the design of a new Jada building is is primary to me, number one on my list. And so I was very pleased when you came forward with the suggestion of funding for the purchase of that property and and taking a look at how we can move forward with that in our community. Regarding Title 20 and the update, I think it's important that, going forward, that we actually have individual meetings with individual commissioners to take a look at our priorities in regards to trying to dissect Title 20 and seeing where our priorities might lie versus and and how that's going to coincide and and mesh with with our master plan. So I think that's I think that's important. And as you know, I I've been very keen on trying to dissect this GMO program and and then also the building codes. I think we need to, you know, take some take some look at looks at that. So but we can talk about that on an individual basis. The I I do appreciate, you know, I I served with you on the four-county coalition legislative body, and and as you know, I was involved very much on the NACO thing as well and board. And so I I have to commend you and appreciate your your work on the China Spring issue. I know we're a long way away from accomplishing a goal and and coming up with a final solution on that. And the loss of employees has really kind of set that back as well. So we we need to see what we can do with that. And I I've checked these things off. You know, I think it's very important that we work with a working group on the water purveyors for a long-term water plan. I've heard Steve Walker say it. I've heard Ed, what's his name? I can't even think of his name right now. Ed with the Sub Conservancy?
James.
Ed James, okay. And and while we plan for flood, we don't plan for water, and we need to do that, especially with if we encounter this drop program as we go forward. One thing that I did that it's not on this list, that I think it needs to be done, because I hear from constituents on an often basis, and I struggled with this as a member of the public. As you know, we have access, we have access to the back door and can look at things in the county on our on our website that are that are that are easy to get for for some reason, that seems to be intuitive. However, when I go in and look at our website, I think we need to review that for a possible update or even possible change or replacement, because it's it's just not user-friendly and it's not intuitive. And I've looked at the websites. I I took the opportunity to go out and look at the websites of Lyon County, Story County, Carson County, you know, and and those seem to be real user-friendly. And so I think we need to devote some time to that. So I would ask you to take a look at that. I also know that we're going to be involved in this opioid crisis fund funding that's coming out of the drug companies, and and I believe we're probably going to get a report fairly soon on on how what what funds we might be available and what we can use those funds for. So those those are some of my priorities that I want to see you take a look at, certainly over the next year. But otherwise, I I do have some additional comments, but I'd like to also hear from the public. So, thank you.
That being said, we'll open the floor to public comment.
For the record, Jeannie Shizuru, Chairman Ingalls, I might take more than three minutes because I want to add some introductory comments about his goals. I wish that the commissioners would direct Patrick Kates to be the tip of the spear in leading the things that are really critical, which you guys mentioned, the water sustainability, the septic system conversion, Title 20, the growth management ordinance. And I would ask you to ask him to delegate the 90% of just keeping the car running. I think that's a really poor use of a $208,000 manager. And he shouldn't just be your information purveyor. You can pretty much get a county employer to give you that the information that he is sending to you. Okay, now I want to read my comments. I'm directing this to all of you, but especially Commissioner Danny Tarkanian, because he may not be aware of the history of Patrick Kates' performance. I was also very curious. He said the word ethics several times in his goals and his accomplishments. Yeah, look at he's nodding his head. I'm just in disbelief that he he sees himself as that ethical. During the hearings of the approval of the development agreement with Park Ranch Holdings, LLC, for the approval of the 2,500 homes and the construction of Mueller Parkway, county manager Patrick Kates asserted that there was sufficient money, $500,000 per year, to pay for the county's portion of Mueller Parkway. During the public outreach meetings where they went out to various places in support of the agreement, Kates continued to assert the same lie. When directly asked in December of 2019 meeting to justify his assertion, the then-board Barry Penzel interrupted his Kates' answer to say that Kates was just doing the bidding of the board and should not be held accountable for this assertion. So the public never had the opportunity to get a straight answer from him about having enough money to pay for Douglas County's portion of Mueller Parkway. I will note that CFO Terry Willoughby was never asked, and is not on the record, of whether there was $500,000 per year available for the construction of Mueller Parkway. So there was no corroboration from the county's finance department on the validity of Kates' assertion. The 2019-2020 budget represented only $250,000 that was available to put in reserves, which presumably could have been redirected to Mueller Parkway bond, leaving a deficit of $250 per year to pay to for to support Kates' assertion. In December 2019, the cost of the desired four-lane Mueller Parkway was estimated at $44 million, of which the build grant was supposed to provide $25 million, and that would have left 19 million for Douglas County to pay for a bond. Without the build grant, the county now has to find the money to build the two lanes of Mueller Parkway within five and a half years in order not to lose the only thing that was of value negotiated with parks, which was the right-of-way through park land. My point is that Patrick Kates lied. Did you hear that, Commissioner Rice? He lied to the public about the finding finance of Mueller Parkway. He let the chairman shamelessly defend him. I and the public are outraged to have an unprincipled $208,000 per year, pencil-pushing, politically coward county manager administrator. I mean, really, we can we can do a lot better with somebody else, and his underling should be able to do the things that he brags about doing. I wait for the day that he is terminated.
Is there any further public comment?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, Minden resident. I am part of Patrick Kates' management team. I have worked for several years for government. I've actually worked for Mr. Commissioner Rice's city manager's best friend. He was my first boss as a finance director. Part of a manager's job, in my opinion, a big part, is to encourage his management team and get the best out of them. I feel that Patrick has done that, especially with me. He encourages me to work hard, and I want to work hard for this county because Patrick Kates is county manager. Thank you.
Dave Brady for the record. Good evening. It's been a long day. I find some comments disappointing, to say the least. One of the things that I'm encouraged about, and what has been referenced by Mr. Kates more than once, is the idea of revisiting the strategic plan. I think that is a critical element in moving this county forward, in in that it will give you, as commissioners, the county, the organization, and the community, a sense of direction. We will know and understand what the priorities are, and we can budget accordingly. So I'm definitely encouraged by that, and I'll continue to beat that drum. That strategic planning is a critical element and necessary, and I applaud Mr. Kates for addressing it. I think one of the things that this community, this county, and this organization needs more than anything is continuity of leadership. This has been one of the Achilles' heels in Douglas County, and I think that there is no evidence to speak otherwise of Mr. Kates' performance that I have seen. Unprincipled, that's a dangerous word. I think that he's led this organization in a very professional way. My only critique is that I'd like to see him out in the community more. But I understand with COVID-19 that that's a difficult proposition. The man actually has a sense of humor. I found that out, too. So all in all, those are the things that I think are critically important, the continuity of leadership, the strategic plan, and I encourage you to carry on.
Dan Ainsworth, I'd like to just second Dave Brady's comments in general. I find Patrick to be very easy to work with, very logical, very organized, very thoughtful. And I've really enjoyed working with him in the short time that he's been here. So I mean, that's, in summary, my comments. I hate to follow up after the comments that were made by the original speaker here on this topic. I I would just say that I hope that Patrick gets a chance to discuss that, and you ask him to give his explanation on the topic that was asserted there. Thank you. Thank you.
Jim Slade. I've had very little interaction with our county manager this past year, primarily due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I have seen him on Zoom board meetings, however, especially regarding the counter-response to COVID. Overall, it seemed like he, along with our CFO, did a good job of navigating the county through a very challenging time. I also commend his office for all the work they did on the VHR ordinance, another thorny controversial issue. One aspect of the dispersal of CARES funding, however, has continued to baffle and disappoint me. The county's plan for the use of CARES funds repeatedly showed $750,000 for local nonprofits. To my knowledge, very little of that, those funds were dispersed to nonprofits. The one time that I heard Mr. Kates asked about this, he merely stated something to the effect of nonprofits have lots of sources of money. Douglas County is blessed with many great nonprofits. They provide a valuable service to the community, primarily through the efforts of volunteers. They serve those most in need, children, the elderly, the sick, the poor, the troubled. Nonprofits save the county money by helping people out of trouble, keep them out of jails and courts, out of the emergency room, out of social services and indigent care. Nonprofits provide a positive return on investment. This past year's been a difficult year for most nonprofits. There have been more than normal need for their services, yet they've been unable, unable to do most of their regular fundraising. Hopefully, in the next round of COVID funding, more assistance will be provided to our nonprofits, who are such a valuable asset to our community. I will look to Mr. Kates to help facilitate that effort. I should also mention that in the past, I was disappointed in Mr. Kates' support for the Park Ranch project, which he voiced vocally at a community meeting at the community center, and that he has always been unwilling to ever state where the funding for a four-lane Mueller Parkway would come from if a build grant was not awarded. So those are my disappointments. Other than that, I think he's done a good job this last year. Thank you.
Any further comment from the audience? Any further comment from the board? Commissioner Gardner?
Well, Mr. Chair, we haven't heard from you.
You are, right now.
Okay, I'll, I'll let you go and then, and then I, I do have some additional comments, but...
Can you keep it under an hour?
Yes, sir, I will. I'll work to that.
How we got here, it was back just before I got on the board and the county was doing a search for a county manager. Ultimately, the board chose a gentleman by the name of Tom Stone. Nancy McDermott, Barry Penzel, Larry Walsh, I don't remember who else was on the board, they voted for Tom Stone. I'm in the audience watching. Ultimately, Mr. Stone had his background investigation done after he was selected. And he had to excuse himself because of something in the background check. I don't know why the background check wasn't done prior, but that's another issue. So now, we're back at the board again, but we have a new board. We have Barry Penzel, Larry Walsh, Wes Rice, myself, and Dave Nelson. And they went through the candidates again, and ultimately, Penzel, Walsh, and Rice voted for Patrick Kates. I did not. I voted for Ron Connect. Okay, fine. So then things start to settle down. And the first thing that we noticed in the county is that the county was a mess. And they weren't even closing the books on a monthly basis. I was told they did, they did it once a year. Well, that means they weren't even doing it. We didn't even know. The first budget season was very difficult and kind of sloppy because we found out that they had been cutting and pasting the budget together and doing all kinds of nonsense. And Willoughby, Kates, members of the board, and the audit committee, that was our primary thrust, trust to get it in there. Now, some of the things, the mechanics and everything in here, Mr. Kates is very good at. But there's, there's something, there's intangibles, too. And there's the word trust. Trust is real important. And I've had a couple of situations where I question his, if I can trust him. And this is just a personal thing. And one of the things is that money that was transferred to Mueller Parkway, to the study, was it legal? Yes. Was it ethical? I don't know. That's a matter of opinion, I guess. Secondly, I wanted to discontinue the meetings at the lake because we were spending initially 150K a year for 12 meetings. And I submitted an agenda item three times and it just disappeared. Well, then-chairman Penzel and Vice Chair Walsh were just throwing it in the trash. Finally, I submitted another one and I had Mr. Kates sign it and date it. He never would tell me that they were just throwing it in the can. So trust is real important in any business relationship. One of the things that I haven't seen on this presentation by Mr. Kates is that he serves at the pleasure of the board, of commissioners. And he, he carries out policy. The board presents and initiates policy for the county manager to carry out. Now, we've been having that, but it would be nice to see it mentioned in here, that he fully understands the relationship between the Board of Commissioners and the county manager. Other than that, mechanically, it's been doing a very good job. And we've all been working hard and looking for things, the ways that we can save money, get things corrected, because I'll tell you, this county was a mess. And it's in pretty good shape now. So on that, we have a motion to carry, to submit. Oh, Commissioner Gardner wants to talk.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You somewhat alluded to where, where I wanted to go in, in one direction. It's, it's often said to praise in public and to question in private. And as you know, there's been times, even in this last six months, where we've had questions and, and we've talked about those in private. So I appreciate those opportunities to do that. Prior to becoming a commissioner, I did have some observations as a, as a member of the public where there were times where I, I I questioned several items that you, that I felt like you were articulating to the public that were a statement of policy versus a carrying out of policy. Okay? And, and perhaps maybe we can discuss those in private later on. But, you know, that's, that's one thing that is different in this kind of review from other reviews that I've been involved with in the private sector, where generally, whether I was doing the reviewing or I was being reviewed, it was done in the private and, and we're not afforded that opportunity here. We, we have to do it in, in the public eye. But I would, I would just ask you to keep that very, very much cognizant of that fact that, that, please be careful in how you present ideas or, or articulate possible policy versus carrying out that policy. So that's, that's, that's all I wanted to continue to say, Mr. Chair, and so...
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice?
One of the things that I wanted to bring up is that we are going to be discussing a merit increase between 0 and 3% effective on March 7. During the COVID problem, he forewent, forewent, forgone. He gave up and did not request any raise whatsoever. And it is now two years later. And I think that without a doubt, in my mind, he has earned his 3% merit increase for what he has done for this county and what he continues to do. And, and I really look forward to the next year and a half at least. And I want to thank him. And I will put that in the form of a motion. I move that we approve a merit increase between, I'm sorry. I move that we approve a merit increase at 3% effective March 7, 2021.
Is there a second? The motion does not carry. And I will tell you why I am opposed and vociferously object to what Commissioner Rice just proposed as a motion. Mr. Kates is the highest-paid county manager in Northern Nevada, way up above anybody else. And when he was selected by Commissioner Penzel, Walsh, and Rice, they were doing all they could to just present some salary that was ridiculously above the normal salary base that the other commissioners, or the other county managers were getting in the counties. Hence, I think the county, and I would propose that we do not give a pay raise. He's adequately compensated, way above every other county manager in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I, I have a point of clarification from, I believe, our Human Resources Director, if you don't mind. Wendy, we can... Is a, is a rating directly related to a percentage increase? That, that's the question I have. I mean, can we give a rating to Mr. Kates without necessarily agreeing to a salary increase? Or how, how does that work?
Wendy Lang, for the record, Human Resources Director. Typically, the county's merit increase policy and performance evaluation policy are tied directly. Mr. Kates has a specific contract and obviously, last year, he forewent that merit increase. You know, I believe you have a great deal of latitude as a board, as long as you make a clear record of what your actions are, if you want to provide input on his performance as a numerical value, but specify that the merit increase is a different or, or not at all. But I'll defer to Cynthia Gregory, Deputy DA, for clarification.
Thank you. So, so that's, you know, that's kind of where, where I am, is that I, I don't, you know, I don't want to say that your performance, Mr. Kates, has been a zero. You know, that, that would be unfair to you, in my opinion. But I, I don't want to tie a numerical rating of your performance to a dollar figure or a percentage of an increase. So that's, that's kind of where I stand. And I, I concur with, you know, when I looked at your compensation package when you were in, in the hiring process, I felt like it was a very, very generous compensation package. And, and since that time, I've taken the opportunity to also review the compensation packages of our neighboring counties. And, and we've had this discussion, so I, I know that you, you know, we've talked about this already. But while I'm, while I'm prepared to, you know, feel like your, your performance has been good, I just feel like the compensation package is, was higher than I necessarily would have approved a couple of years ago. And so I'm not really prepared at this time to, to, to go further with, you know, in, in, in increase. So I just have to be upfront and honest with you about that, so. But it, but it doesn't reflect, you know, how I feel about your performance. That's, that's what I want to, that's what I want to say.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Noesad?
I would like to call Commissioner Gardner's attention to paragraph nine, line three. A merit increase between 0 and 1, correction, 0 and 3%, it is a percent. So if we offer a 0, he's going to go away with $208,000. If we give him a 1, he's going to get an increase of 20, or 2,000 a year. Ain't that much. However...
Is that a motion?
No, I'll... I will make a motion. I would encourage the board to approve for the performance of county manager Patrick Kates based on the priority set by the board last June and granting the permit increase of 0%.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll second that with, once again, the clarification that, that is, you know, to Mr. Kates, that has no indication of the, the performance level, so.
Understood.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just, I know there's been a motion and second, but I think there was a question by Commissioner Gardner with regards to whether or not the 0 to 3% was tied to performance. And just for clarification, per the contract, it is. So it's 0 to 3 based on performance of the goals that were set for the prior year. So I understand what you're saying, but the merit increase is directly tied to the performance.
Does anyone care to amend the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I believe that we are selling our county commissioner short. I also happen to be aware of what county managers and city managers make, and he is not overpaid for what he does. And I still maintain that he deserves the raise.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Rice's comment, the, the salaries that were quoted were for Northern Nevada.
I would remind the commissioner that Douglas County in Northern Nevada is the best-run county in, in the state. In fact, I'd say it's the best-run county in the whole damn state of Nevada. And I know because I travel the state a lot as the Rural Caucus Chair for the Republican Party. And I completely disagree.
May I make a statement?
We, we still need a motion.
Mr. Chair, we have a motion on the floor.
There was a motion and a second?
Say what? Say...
I believe there was a motion and a second. So I don't know if you want to call for the vote or allow...
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Commissioner Noesad and a second by Commissioner Gardner. Is that correct?
That's correct for a 0%. And so I don't know if you want to call for the vote or allow Mr. Kates the opportunity to respond.
I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
I'll say nay.
Okay, the motion carries 3-2. Thank you very much. Presentation only. Reports, updates from county commissioners, members and concerning the various boards and commissions that they may be on and members of to, and liaisons to these meetings and functions that have, they have attended. Does anybody have any information they want to pass on?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this week, I sat, I sat with the Audit Committee and I was really, really impressed with how well that went. They, they're following the rules and doing everything they need to do to do all right.
Okay, this is for closing public comment? Does anybody have any closing public comment?
Lucky guess. Jim Slade. I'd like to thank Chairman Engels for his willingness to allow public comment on action agenda items, as was the procedure for at least the last 20 years prior to COVID. While that pandemic disrupted the normal course of board meetings, now that we are back in the in-person-only meeting, it is appropriate to return to the way public comment was held for many years. Public comment should be welcomed by the board. It's an important way for the board to better understand how their constituents feel on important issues facing our community. There are only two regularly scheduled board meetings each month. Getting through the meetings as quickly as possible should not be the priority. Serving the public and hearing their input and concern should be. I think you will find that it doesn't significantly lengthen most meetings and that most action agenda items will have no public comment. So again, thanks to Chairman Engels for doing the right thing and recognizing the importance of public comment. One last note on the building permit allocation system. After that item was heard, Tom DeLair, Sam Booth, Dave Brady, Dan Ainsworth, and myself continued the conversation out in the hallway. I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I would say that we all agreed that limiting the annual rate at which the two excess allocation pools were utilized was a good approach to achieve the intent of the ordinance. We also felt that it should be done expeditiously, without delay. Whether you choose my suggestions of 50 and 100 per year, or Mr. Gardner's 10%, the point is that it should be adopted sooner rather than later. We also agreed that recalibrating the numbers after each U.S. Census does make sense. Finally, while I'm not opposed to no increase in the county manager's salary because I think he is very generously compensated, it is disappointing that the perception will be that it is linked to his performance, because I don't think his performance deserves a zero, as Mr. Gardner said. So I think there should be some way to delink them. I think most people would agree that he's done a more-than-passable job, a good job for this past year, especially with all its difficulties. But I think it's unfortunate the perception will be that the board does not approve of his job, whereas I think most of the board does approve of it, at least to varying degrees. And the fact that they voted not to increase the salary is only a reflection of how high many of us consider the salary to be already. Thank you.
Mr. Slade, I'll tell you what. We'll increase his salary when the Board of Commissioners increase their salary.
Do I have to follow that? Dan Ainsworth, I'd like to echo Jim's comments on all three points. And firstly, I thought the discussion on the growth management ordinance was very educational across the board, and I hope you do, too, because I think there were a lot of things that were clarified, both from maybe our input standpoint, from the DA's standpoint, and between yourself. So I thought that was a really good conversation. And I think timing sooner than later for you as a board would be beneficial for not only you, but for our community, too. They'll think that you're doing something, you're on top of it, and so forth. And I, too, have to say, I was disappointed in how our county manager's review came out because of exactly what Jim said. The zero and the 0 to 3 thing from a performance and a compensation thing shouldn't be linked in the way it is. I know you wanted to do something different than that, but you didn't. So maybe you can find a way to express to the public some sort of performance evaluation level, despite the fact that there was no increase. Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Brady, for the record. I've been an elected official in Douglas County for 18 years, and I've provided evaluations to superintendents and county commissioners or county managers for many, many of those years. What I have just witnessed is embarrassing, truly embarrassing. Because, number one, what are the metrics by which you're measuring here's performance? And how is that tied to an evaluation? And how is it tied to a merit increase? I'm sorry to say, but this is not the way that business should be done when you're dealing with your top executive. You have to find a much better way to evaluate and critique and provide direction. But the message you're sending to Mr. Cates, to the community, and to this entire organization is that he is of no value. And you better straighten out that conversation quick, fast, and in a hurry.
Mr. Brady, you want to meet me out in the parking lot after this meeting's adjourned? If you finish quick.
Jerry Turner, continuing. We are now placing 5G military-grade towers, smart meters, smartphones and TVs, LED lights on lamp posts and in our houses, displacing a 5G blanket. Low satellites are now being placed in orbit to have 5G covering on the whole planet. When, with HARP assistance, what can we expect to happen? Question mark. Microwaves are being used in our schools that cause brain damage and destroys DNA microbes and our brains function and our testings that support immune systems. Microwaves destroy our brain function and immune systems while strengthening bacteria that damages the body. A book has been written that contains over 4,000 illnesses caused by 5G radiation. Pharmaceuticals are making trillions, cause illness, and make profits from supposed cures. There is a radio microwave scale of microwatts per centimeter squared of stepped-up microwave watts, eight levels, at each level stating the harmful, harmful from the lowest level to six microwatts per centimeter squared. At four, microwatts, damage to the brain. At six, microwatts, damage to cell DNA. A standard smart meter has eight microwatts per centimeter squared. The Federal Communication Commission allows 600 to 1,000 microwatts per millimeter squared, 100 to 150 times more than what causes damage to all living cells' DNA. Thousands of times more damage than the lowest level on the scale. Children are 60% more microwaves than adults due to size and resonance of the 5G wave. 5G and Wi-Fi are now being placed in schools with our children. What kind of madness are we doing? Trust me, please watch the videos YouTube, 5G Apocalypse, Dash, The Extinction Event, and Barry Trower, 5G Wi-Fi Smart Meters Armageddon Initiatives. An old Italian saying used by Ben Franklin, "Make yourself sheep, and the wolves will eat you." Today, we are making ourselves sheep, and the wolves are having a meal. The globalist money barons are behind COVID-19. COVID-19 is the creator of the meal we have given them under trickery for profit by being deceived through massive banking and financial fraud schemes and trickery by flooding the zone. Globalists responsible for the recession, depression blamed on a false created virus, making massive profits for the, from the system. Thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Yes?
May I suggest a book by the name of Radiation Nation? You read it.
Okay, Radiation Nation. Thank you.
Mr. Cates has an announcement.
For the record, Patrick Cates, I just received a report that there is a fire about 35 acres, three miles west of the California-Nevada border, so it's in Alpine County, but close to our county, and about three miles east of Indian Creek Reservoir. So Mud Lake, east of Indian Creek Reservoir, so very close to the state line.
This meeting is adjourned.